All right, thank you, Stacy. All right, folks, welcome. This is the March 31st, 2025, meeting of Kingston Select Board. It's also our department heads meeting, our monthly meeting, and we have a number of those individuals with us today. But before we start, I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A quick reminder to, please remember to use your microphones when you speak. Make sure the green light is on and that the microphone is on the table placed in front of you. There have been some board meetings recently where that was not happening and it becomes very, very difficult, especially not only for us to hear, but for people watching either the stream or the video after the fact to hear the discussion, so. And Adam is not here in the booth this morning, so he won't be rapping at the window to remind us. I will try to remind you if I happen to notice it. Okay, so, as I said, it's a department head meeting this morning, but before we do that, if there are any boards, oh, I should introduce, folks, first. I will do that. I'll do the board first. To my left, Lori Swed, board member. To my immediate left, Susan Eyre, our administrative assistant. Glenn Koppelman, Chair, sitting here. To my immediate right, Ellie LSAO, Vice Chair. Next to her, Peter Bakie, Board Member, and then Ellen Falkner, Board Member. And then going around the table, Police Chief Joel Johnson. Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer Pedro Villa. Building and Grounds, Gran Poo Bah, Tom Rowan. I like that one. Library Director Melissa Mannen. Recreation Director Abby Zarkowski. Finance Director, HR Person, Manager, Director, Paul La Mahoney. Town Clerk Tax Collector Tammy Bakie. In the audience, we have Budget Committee Chair Stacy Dion. We have Energy Committee Chair and Zoning Board Member and multiple other things, Rick Russman, and don't see anybody else. Okay. I'm sorry?
This is, no, I already know. He had an email.
Is it something I need to announce?
No, you don't want to announce.
No, it's Graham's not able to be here today.
Oh, okay. All right. So our Fire Chief is not with us today. All right. Before we get to department heads, are there any boards or committees that wish to present any material or give us updates on anything? Stacy? How about right here?
The Budget Committee met on Wednesday night to organize, and we have selected the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. So I will be the Chair for another year. Chuck Hart is the Vice Chair, and Trish Tid is the Secretary. We also discussed liaisons, and I don't know if we're going to bring the two departments that we kind of...
I'll have to select about that one.
Okay. So we have liaison set. We did it by department heads, Chair, if there was a Chair or a department head, and if there was a budget for that. And Ellen will talk about that. Yeah, so we created a liaison for Building Inspection and Code Enforcement Officer because there is a budget for that, but we have never had a separate liaison for that. And for the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, because there is a budget for that, and with the recycling fund that's just approved, we figured it would be good for them to be able to present their budget outside of just being in the select for budget. And the other liaisons are set, and I'll send that list out to all the department heads. It is a little different. We kind of changed a bunch around this year, so your liaisons from last year probably aren't the same. And we will be meeting on a quarterly basis to review expenditures, and we will be starting the budget cycle in September again, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Stacy? Okay, thank you. Rick, anything to report? No? Okay. Well, you'll have other opportunities anyway, so. Okay, before we start going around the room for department heads, I did send out an email to you all over the weekend and apologized that it was on the weekend, and if you haven't had a chance to review it, that's fine, but wanted to make sure that in your presentations and discussions with us, that given the times that we're living in with budget cuts and all kinds of changes happening at the federal level, and it seems to be now at the state level as well, it's going to clearly impact our operations here in town. And so the monthly department head meeting, in my mind anyway, seemed to be a good opportunity for you all to update us on things that you think that we ought to be aware of, and, you know, and the sooner we know about it, the better, and if we have to head things off of the past, we can. If it impacts our budget and we have to look at that, then we should be doing that, too. So as you present to us, just, I'd like you to be thinking about that and update us as best you can on how you think your particular department or your organization will be impacted by some of these things. And I'd like to do that on a monthly basis when we get together, just so that it's sort of a running commentary and update on where we stand, because this thing's pretty dynamic. I mean, every day you get up in the morning and you hear something else, so it's... Anyway, with that, Tammy, would you like to start?
Sure. The school board met to discuss the request to have elections at the school, and they made a discussion of the issues. So I will be attending the meeting on Wednesday the second. Anyone who wants to join me. I have talked with Tom. We have come up with some solutions to some of their concerns about setting up earlier or breaking down early so that he can accommodate us, because looking at the proposed plan, we're not going to be able to use this way to jam once they finish, and once they start, I would leave it to him to run construction. And I don't want to go back and forth, that the residents are going to get used wherever we go with it. So I want to go and...
Can we have somebody from the board commit to go with her? As a former moderator, I would like to, but I have a commitment that evening. So I just, I think someone from the Board of Selectment should go to support the Town Clerk.
I'd offer to do it, but I have a commitment on that day as well.
What time is the meeting?
It is 6:00 at the school library.
And that's Wednesday?
Wednesday the 2nd.
I'll go.
Great.
Thank you, Lori.
Can I, too, have a commitment Wednesday night? It's not, you need, it should be represented for, and we could talk off-camera, and I'd fill you in on a couple of details that have arisen over the weekend.
Okay. The new technology that was brought to the election, I think, went all well, extremely well. It was received well from both the voters and the election workers. Boat keys have been ordered. They should be in this week, $5 for a boat key. And we have 795 dogs that need a new license before the end of April. The rabies clinic is this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:30 at the Fire Department. The taxes, there's $495,000 due in taxes. We have started the deed process. We will send out lien notices on April 2nd for the taxes that haven't been paid from last year. And on the agenda, there was a question about the bill, tax bill inserts. By law, the Select Board needs to have the bill, the warrant to me on May 15th, so I would like them a week before that, so that I know that they're there in my office, and then when I get the warrant, I can create the bills and start stuffing.
Okay, so by around May 7th or 8th?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
So do we need to let people know they need it by, that we need it by May 7th or 8th, so Tammy can get it in time to...
Or if you need longer, so if you said May 1st, then you'd have plenty of time to look at it.
That's what I'm saying, just the board should set a date, so that we do that today.
Yeah, well, so if you said May 1st, then you would have the opportunity, if there was a spelling error or something that could be corrected, and then printed, so that they would be in my office.
We need it before.
Yeah.
Ellen, is that a motion?
Sure, I didn't know what the date would be, but do we want it by the first Monday in May, or do we want it by the last Monday in April?
I would say the last Monday in April to account for if there's changes.
Okay.
So that is...
April 28th. The last Monday is April 28th.
Right. Yeah, that would have, we should probably say, because if the 28th and then the next meeting is May 5th, and that wouldn't be enough time for us to approve and people to print. So it'd be the 21st. That way they can approve it, then they can get printed, and then we can get them to you in time, so, I know. That's still probably plenty of time.
And again, one piece paper.
We've told everybody it's just one page, can't be folded. We went over all that last week, and that we could have two groups if they each took one side, but that would be it, so.
So Ellen, the motion is to have any...
Any proposed inserts.
Proposed inserts for the tax bill to the Select Board no later than April 21st?
Correct.
End of day? Okay. And who's seconded?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
With the caveat, if there's more than one, then we get to choose which one gets in.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, I mean, everybody needs to know that it's not, just because they give us something doesn't mean it's going in, because we, if there's more than two, we're going to have to choose.
Right, there's one sheet of paper, and we can have something on one side and something on the other side, but that's it. Okay. All right, so, any further discussion? The motion was by Ellen, seconded by Ellie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Restemptions? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right, okay. Tammy? Oh, okay. Thank you. Paula? Paula? Yeah, there might not be enough mics for everyone, because some of the mics are not working well, so.
Really, just working on my regular day-to-day things. We have, last Thursday, I think it was Thursday, I spoke with the auditors. We'll be getting our draft for '23, this week or next week. They didn't give an actual date, so once I get that and send it back, then they'll send the final. And then I also scheduled a 2024 audit for June 3rd through 6th. So I will be sending out this week the pre-audit forms that we always get. And then regarding the state changes and taxes, tax changes and everything, the one that could affect my department right now is Senate Bill 297, and I don't have a lot of information about it yet. The first part got approved, but in June or July, whenever they vote, is when, if it finalizes. It affects all of our risk pools, so Primex, Health Trust, there's another one that we aren't really involved in, and it could require more fees and more charges, higher charges. Health Trust did say that they, if it did get approved, that they wouldn't be able to keep up and wouldn't be able to offer providing health insurance for us, so that is a little scary. But over the weekend, I got an email from the Secretary of State saying that Health Trust doesn't have the right to give that threat. So, again, not much information, but...
So I'm assuming, though, that if it was something that was going to affect us, it would probably affect most towns.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's not just affecting us. This would affect, yeah. So that's, I don't have a lot of information on it yet, but...
Well, a lot of this stuff is early, because, I mean, the legislation is making its way through.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a lot of it's in the House right now. Eventually, it's going to be going over to the Senate, and there's going to be a lot of back and forth, so. I just didn't want to wait until July or August, when, you know, it was all said and done, and we are then, all of a sudden, now finding out about this stuff. I'd rather keep up on it as best we can as it goes along.
So I've been keeping up on, going to be keeping up on that.
We don't really significantly rely on federal funds.
No.
Or state, for that matter, because they're very stingy, the state is.
Yeah, otherwise, that stuff isn't going to, the other things shouldn't be affecting us. It's just this one would, because Primex and Health Trust are part of risk pools, this bill affects risk pools.
Does, excuse me, does the board get updates from NHMA?
Yes.
Yep. I get the, I know a lot of us get the weekly blast. If you sign up for it, you get it, and it's very helpful to keep up on that stuff, and it's a lot, yeah.
And not to discuss it today, because we have a lot, I have it on.
Fresh?
Yeah, this could be the last time. Is that something that we should talk about, as to whether or not, if this is going to impact us in the town financially, that we may have to decide to, you know, there's always the thing, contact your representative to say you don't want this. Can we talk about that at some point, to see if that's something we should do, if it's going to be that dramatic to us?
I do it. I do it, and I'm on the Legislative Committee of the Town Clerk Tax Collector, so I go up there sometimes to test.
Yeah, and I've contacted Pierre Brown, one of our reps. He's very responsive and actually attends to a lot of our meetings.
And I'm aware of that, but I just, I didn't know how it works, where we are a group kind of thing.
Well, there could, obviously, any of us individually have the opportunity to comment, but if there are issues that we want to be represented as a board, we ought to discuss it, and then assign someone to be the person carrying that message, so.
Because I appreciate the Secretary of State sending something that they shouldn't have done that, but nonetheless, that doesn't mean they won't. And if that could impact not only our employees and their insurance, but how much it may cost, I think that might be something we should, you know, address if we need to as a board, but I leave that to you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Paula. Abby?
So right now, we're busy planning Easter activities for the town. We have our children's Easter egg hunt on Saturday, starting at 9:00, and then our adult Easter egg hunt is April 16th, starting at the rec, going to the draft house after. Right now, we have tickets for $20 per person, and then we have raffles for businesses. I'm still reaching out to businesses to get prizes, but we've just been, I've been getting a bunch of Easter stuff, like, every day. And then, as far as camp goes, it's settled down a little bit. All the field trips are planned, everything. We still have a big waitlist, and Caitlin came up with a great document that's tracking payments and who, how many days each family has, and who's paid, and whatnot, so I think it's going well. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Abby? I should have also asked any questions for Paula, but Ellen sort of already did, so there we go. Melissa?
Hi, good morning. We have a lot going on in our library. The, last week, the House of Reps for the State of New Hampshire tried to close the State Library by cutting it out of the budget. There was backlash, and they backed off on that. But currently, the federal government has said that they are trying to defund IMLS, which needs congressional approval, but we'll see how that goes. So what would that mean? We currently, the New Hampshire State Library gets $1.5 million of IMLS money each year. This amounts to .003% of the federal budget, but it's a big deal for New Hampshire and for Kingston, so we circ, the main things that would be affected, that would affect our library, is eBooks and audiobooks. That platform would go away, because that's supported through IMLS funds. Also, our interlibrary loan services would go away, because the state van is supported by IMLS funds. So what this means, last year, we borrowed 1,691 items from other libraries throughout the state, and we borrowed 9,108 titles of eBooks and e-audio. So librarians are working hard to figure out how to navigate this. The Seacoast Library Network, of which we are a part, has come up with a plan for people from other towns to go to a town and work with their library to get a book. It wouldn't be through van service, and it wouldn't be as robust as what we have now, but we're preparing for this in case, in case it happens. This amounts to 1/3 of our total circulation in Kingston of materials, so it's a big deal for us.
It's very large.
It is large, yeah.
Wow.
So that's what's going on with funding. We've had a lot of library director meetings and such, and we're trying to, we're trying to figure that all out. Other things are happening. For example, we have a hole in our library building right now. Thank you to everybody who showed up and helped in the emergency. The person involved in the accident is okay. There was nobody in that room at the time. The staff thought a bookshelf fell down. It was just very loud. So right now, Tom is helping me get contractors to bid on that, then it goes to Primex for approval, and then we'll move forward with repairs, which are rather extensive there. It's a slower process than I would hope, but we want to do it right, and it takes a while, especially this time of year, I think, to get all the contractors lined up. We have also hired a fundraiser to help us with our outdoor planning project. We just did that last week. I'm very excited. He's a very dynamic person, and I think he's, he's going to be a big help, giving us a path forward for how to find grants and private donations for our project, which the landscape architect is finishing up right now. We'll have final plans next month, and we go before the Planning Board with them, because we want to do this and be transparent, and we want everybody to get excited about what we've done. I think they're great plans, and they're going to do a lot for the town. And those are the big things we have going on.
Lots of stuff. And just, just to be clear, you said that you're going before the Planning Board, but it's not that the Planning Board has any authority to approve or disapprove anything, but you're doing it as a, I mean, in Kingston, we have that, sort of that protocol, is that whenever a town department or a municipal entity is going to be doing a building or a construction or something like that, they usually do bring it before the Planning Board, just as a courtesy, if you will. It's also a way for it to sort of become public information for people who might be interested, so.
Yeah, exactly, and there should, there should be no problems. The only, the only thing that, talking to Glenn, there was, we're building new parking, so the parking will require drainage, and that's the thing that the Planning Board's really going to look at and help us do properly.
And hopefully, the, I mean, the town engineer should be able to look at the plans and provide some good input in that regard.
Yeah, we've already spoken with him, so I think we have our ducks in a row.
Yeah, good. Ellie?
I have a question.
Open your microphone, please.
With 1/3 of the circulation on eBooks, which is huge in borrowing, do you need to develop an IT platform that would allow you to do that regardless?
So we can circulate eBooks through this, what's the Libby system, the Overdrive system. That's a shared system that no library can afford on its own. We do have other outlets for circulating eBooks. Our library catalog can do that, but we don't have the content. And eBooks cost about three times to four times as much as other books, so the shared system is really the best way to do it, so it's not an easy fix.
Has your Seacoast Directors Group even looked at maybe...
Sorry, I thought I hit it. Approaching book, the bookstore's major book, like, I can't even think of the one I use. Bookstores, the major ones.
Like Barnes &amp; Noble?
Barnes &amp; Noble, that's the one, thank you, to see what they would or might be interested in doing and working in collaboration with a network through the state.
Part of the problem is the way publishers have set up how loaning books work, which is very different from the purchase model, so.
Okay, all right. Trying to think outside the box a little bit.
So I want to know when you're going to bring back the bookmobile.
Portsmouth just brought theirs back.
Did they really?
They did, yeah.
Oh, very cool. I'm dating myself, but that's okay.
A little red wagon?
Oh, there you go. Beautiful. Little red wagon, we'll get the hand puppets going, and, yeah, okay.
In South America, they use donkeys to...
All kinds of options. Any questions for Melissa? Okay, thank you very much. Tom?
Just a note on the, on the mailer. Since it's a public outreach mandate for stormwater, I'd like the board to consider, like, every year, any mailer that goes out in a tax bill, you know, whether it's a quarter of the page, whatever, should be on there to meet, meet the requirements. So that's just a thought. Stairs, as you can see, they're moving along finally. Paving should be done this week. Railing, eh, maybe, maybe this week, maybe not. And on another note, CSX Railroad Company, New Boston Road will be shut down. Joel's aware, Graham's aware, it'll, should be shut down, 4-4, which is a Friday, to 4-7 on a Sunday. The road will be closed.
24-7?
24-7. 4-4 is the anticipated start date to 4-7, but that could change, because whether, they're starting in Plastow and moving this way, and they just continue on up to Portland, so that's going to happen. Hopefully, they'll stay on schedule, and that's...
Is that, is that for the ties?
Yeah, replays and ties, yeah. And it may be, they may be a two-day event, but they, it is a multiple-day event on that, on that road. And I don't have to mention the library, because you've already mentioned that. And I just want, a reminder, 4-26 is in Plastow Public Works, the household hazardous waste is coming up. So that's just a reminder on that. Other than that, nothing too exciting.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Questions for Tom?
I have one question. Is Newton Junction going to be shut down as well?
Uh, no. No. The state, that was done, I don't know, three, four years ago.
I didn't know if they were coming through Plastow and just going down.
Yeah, they're skipping, there's a few roads they're skipping, because they were done in, you know, a few years back, so.
Can I ask how we let the residents know this is happening? How do we let the residents know this is happening?
Well, well, we've put a signboard out.
Great, okay.
Hopefully, at the tracks, so if they actually drive to their house.
Right, and it is posted on the website in that revolving news.
Posted on the website. Basically, there's, you know, Rowell Estates, Derby Lane, a few other houses that are, and there's a lot of cut-through, but, you know, those are the impacted neighborhoods there.
Okay, just, and can we, can we ask a broadcast person to put it on the bulletin board? And can we ask a broadcast person to put it on the bulletin board?
Sure. Susan, could you do that? Could you ask Adam to do that, please?
Thank you.
Do we happen to know how many sort of immediate residences are affected by this?
No, I do not.
Okay.
There's-- I know there's roughly 40 in Rowell, and there's, I'm going to say, a handful of houses up to Derby Lane and Derby Lane, so there's probably 30, 40 houses.
So, where I'm going with the question is, I realize it wouldn't cover everybody, but for those who are probably going to be most directly impacted, I mean, would it be worth printing up just an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven flyer and actually dropping them off and hand-delivering them, just so people know?
Wouldn't be a bad idea. Wouldn't be a bad idea.
Well, I mean, again, not everybody keeps up on the website, not everybody reads signboards. I mean, and, you know, if I happened to live right near there and I use that crossing all the time, and I was unaware, it would be--
I'd be more concerned that somebody who was ill and needed relatives to come help them would be able to have found that information because you've given it to them, and they can then call their people and say, "You won't be able to get to me that day," or something. It just, as you say, some people, depending on their circumstances, may not get the information.
How would we do that logistically as a town? I mean--
What, is it 30 or 40?
Right.
How about put it in the mail?
We could post-- I mean, Lisa could come up with a flyer, and then it--
That wouldn't work. Lost track of that it's going to be able--
Sorry, say again.
Well, I think, because it's just a couple of days away, right? It's just this coming weekend, so we would have to just come up with a quick flyer, and then probably somebody going and putting them in the mailbox.
You'd have to sort of hang them on the door, between the door or something.
Or hanging on the door.
Between the storm door and--
Right. Or their front door.
Who do we have that would be able to do that?
Yeah, it depends on-- so, your thought is to actually physically deliver to-- not in the mailbox, which we can't.
Correct.
Why don't you just land it some, because they got the big mailbox, right? Do they have their own?
Well, Rowell has a big mailbox, so I--
I just get a--
That would be easily posted there, and then you have the individual houses. I'd have to guess at least 20 of them, maybe. I don't know.
The electronic side says it all.
Yeah, I--
It's been going for a week. If they can't figure that out, then it is--
Unfortunately--
It's going along a week.
You'll have to turn around. I keep forgetting April is, like, tomorrow. I don't think we logistically have any time to do that individually.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
The signboards are not--
And, yeah.
We're all thinking this.
Ellie, you had something?
No. I want to hold it right now.
Tom, anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Pedro?
Hi, good morning, members of the board. I'll try to keep it low because my voice is a mess. We went last week and visited Kenny's junkyard garage. All that is done. You guys can sign off on the permitting. I couldn't send you the email because I got stuck with a facility and all things going on. We're working right now on the code enforcement section of the online permitting system. It's going full gear. We're only going to be-- we are only going to be requesting names and phone numbers for complaints or an email, so it can be interchangeably. But to have some means of communication relay back or find it to the complainant. Thus far this year, we have 134 applications. Out of that, we have reviewed 125 that have generated $22,449.25. We still have a lot more coming. There are many projects, large projects, coming to town. We started to talk about Depot Road, where they plan to bring into town 120 units, residential units, from dealing with the fire department. We're working within all the frames to make sure that we can give them instructions on what will be our expectations, if they so choose to go above and beyond or allowable height from the storming ordinance. We have met at a common ground, and we have dictated pretty much that we will need to make sure that they can comply with secure areas and proper rigorous discharge and rigorous pathways and things of that nature. So, I will be out next Monday and Tuesday. I'm going to be doing a training seminar that is actually a federal training seminar that is called "When Disaster Strikes," and that is to prepare court officials on creating an assessment sheet for when a disaster strikes, flood, snow load, collapsing a building, earthquakes, anything of that nature, so that we can prepare a really rigorous form that will allow the town to access funds from FEMA. And we will be working with the governing body to address those issues when and if they strike the town. Other than that, pretty busy. It's exponentially coming. Right now, we're seeing the weekly volume increase as of this time of the year. So, any questions?
Pedro, at this point, with regard to building permits, are they all coming in now online as opposed to by paper?
Yes, yes. And we help any resident or contractor to do it in the computer, in the front computer. Some of them actually choose to give me a call, and I can guide them through the phone on how to do it as well.
So, we don't accept paper anymore, or, let's say, somebody just-- I'm just asking.
Yeah. So, no, I'm trying to transition from paper first because we don't have a way of having a sequential paperwork that came into flow. We stamp it with a date, but there is no sequence whatsoever to the paper flow. So, we want to create that sequence. We want to be able to also make sure that papers don't get lost. The applications online, they don't get lost. We have it there. They are constantly shining on our screen, and we also receive messages from the cloud permitting telling us, "Hey, this application has been open for five days, 10 days." I have it set up that every 48 hours, I get an email when an application hasn't been worked on from any trade, any department, anything that's going on. So, I'm multiplying that in and contacting the inspector on that.
And there's a terminal here in Town Hall that if someone comes in, they can do it at that terminal, and they can have somebody help them if need be?
Yes, and we also help, I mean, even if they need to create an email account, because they have never had one.
Okay.
We help them on that, and we try to go the whole mile, too, so that they can feel comfortable with the process, and they can understand better the process.
I ask only because over the weekend, I just happened to be speaking with a resident who was going to need to put in a permit, and they said, you know, "We haven't done a building permit before, you know, how do we do that?" I said, "Well, everything's online now, blah, blah, blah." And I got this look of, "Oh, no," on their face, and I said, "Well, you know, we've tried to make it easy. We've tried to provide all the assistance," and so, you'll be hearing from this individual because--
Yes, yes.
But anyway, okay, thanks, Pedro. Any questions for Pedro? All right. Chief Johnson?
Put a purchase order in for two radar units. I'm going to need those, if they're signed, I'm going to need the minutes to go with it. I'll get reimbursed 75% of the $5,900. That money will be coming out of the detail account, so it doesn't have any effect on the taxpayers.
So, Joel, you said you'll need the minutes, so we'll have to do a motion for that?
We all signed it, but you said we--
Yeah, I need the minutes. I need something.
So, we'll have to do a motion, so it's in the minutes.
So, I'm assuming it's this one for custom signals, Inc.?
Yes, yes. It's Highway Enforcement, right?
It's for Eagle Three Dual K-Band Antenna with Same Direction Fast, et cetera, et cetera. See, that's a radar unit.
That's the one, yes. There should be two.
And quantity two, unit priced $2,915 for a total amount of $5,830.
So moved.
And it's coming out of the detail account, it says.
Yes.
Motion by Ellie.
Sir.
And your mic wasn't on, but that's okay.
I said it loud on the--
You did.
I heard it.
Second by Peter. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That's good.
Thank you. So, my two new offices, they're going to the Academy in May. They're doing really well. They're going to be outstanding, police officers. Very happy with their work. With that being said, one of my offices, who's been out for six months on medical, he did send a letter requesting to change his status to part-time, and I put an ad out to hire another full-time officer. If for some reason he gets better, and I haven't hired anybody, I'll take him back as a full-timer, okay? But right now, he knows that with the two new guys, they can't be on their own, so even though I'm fully staffed, I'm really kind of not, because I got two new guys that have to drive with a certified officer. So, that's where I'm at with there. I put the ad out two weeks ago, and I've had one response. And I'm like, "Why?" You know, I asked for a full-time certified officer, start pay 28 to 34, depending on what's what I have with my budget. Can't get anybody. Nobody's applying. Anybody want a job? Pedro, what are you doing?
I'm already policing the whole town on other things.
I'm sure there are lots of reasons why, and we can speculate, but is part of it also time of year dependent?
No, it's-- I think it's just the environment. I think that it's not the most popular job anymore.
Well--
We're also-- we're competing against $20,000 sign-on bonuses. There's some departments paying $33 an hour for them to go to the Academy, which, that's crazy money, but that's what I'm going against. So, we'll keep picking away. So, our stats are doing well. We're right where we were last year. We've had 71 arrests this year already. And if I had two more guys, I'd probably be higher, you know? So, things are good. Busy. Detective is out of control busy. She's got a lot of cases going on right now. It's pretty serious cases. Those will-- I'll be talking about them at some point when people leave her.
Do you anticipate any funding issues with regard to federal or state stuff happening?
No. No. We're good.
Questions for Joel? Okay, thank you very much. Yes?
I'd like to report for Chief-- We're going to be competing over here. Chief Pellerin was not able to attend. He's not been well. He's getting lots of antibiotics and fluids. He'll be back soon, but he wanted me to ask the board. They need an extension on the group that's reviewing the stats on the tankers that we want to purchase, and he wants a few more weeks. They want to be able to go visit the local towns to see, check on the quality of the two vendors, because they're fairly new to us, even though one is familiar. But they needed a few more weeks in order to do their due diligence before they make a recommendation to the board on which bid to accept. And he also wanted me to convey that there are no-- their budget is not contingent on any federal funds, so anything that happens in Washington will not impact them at all at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Should we make a motion to--
Yes, we should.
Two firsts. I mean, was there really a rate that you're not?
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, obviously, we want this to happen, and they want it to happen soon, because the sooner we do it, the sooner we can take advantage of any advance buying opportunities and all that, but--
I would think he said in an email that they needed a couple more weeks.
Three more weeks.
Three more weeks, but I would think instead of giving them a timeline, like Glenn had stated that, I think they want us to have it, or that we want from them. I think they're all over it. They just double-checking the i's and crossing the t's.
That's fine with me.
We did, but we could do honor before June 1st.
That's what I'm saying.
Let's do that.
Did we do a date?
Yeah, we did. We did. Date certain was to be today, I believe.
Okay. I thought that was a target of when we were going to look at the--
Yeah, I think it was just like next week or something. We're not necessarily putting that--
I'd rather say, give them the opportunity to, or ask them to get it to us as soon as they're ready.
Okay, that's fine with me.
And that way, they don't have a timeline, and, I mean, because obviously, it's something they want to do and need to get done, so. And rather have them do their due diligence as they feel they need to. So, is that-- do you want to do that by motion, or is everyone fine with that?
And I'll let him know.
Okay, thanks. Anything else from you folks? Okay, we're going to go on to board business. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to go. Yes, yep, yep.
The old business, I think, is points of discussion. We should talk about that on T.
Yeah.
We should talk about that Public Works.
Highway buildings and grounds.
Oh, okay. Under points of discussion.
Yeah, and also the RFQ. Because we don't know what Paula's opinion is on the RFQ, the weight study RFQ.
So, just so everyone knows, we also-- we will be recessing the select board meeting at 10:30 so that we can take up a Board of Health meeting, and Pedro, you'll be involved in that.
Yes.
And will Kevin be here, too? Okay. Apparently, we need to meet as a Board of Health a couple of times a year, and I'm not sure we've been doing that, but with the issues going on right now, with some of the sampling of water and PFAS-related stuff, it was a good opportunity to get folks, to get that group together, and we have one of our consultants coming in to talk to us about that, so. So, Peter, you handed out something here.
Yeah, I'll speak on behalf of that. I saw it on the agenda, so I'll do a little research. I'm now leaving, and I'll have to go to John Rogan, who sits down at the end of the table. Apparently, somehow, over the last predecessor, they took over Ridge St. Elia's yard. The name was changed, and I do not believe that was ever a decision by the void. I think it was a self-appointed decision for that name, as the Department of Public Works. And I did a little research. It used to be called the Road Agent of Ridge St. Elia, but there's actually an RSA that covers the terminology that requires highway in that verbiage. So, it would actually be a highway agent, and it would be the Highway Department versus the DPW office or building, whatever they're calling it down there. You can see here, there's many hats Tom wears. He oversees the stormwater. He oversees the cemetery, the landfill, buildings, grounds, collection center, the trash and the solid waste. So, to put all of that into a title, he'd have quite a title. So, I think all those avenues fall under the direction of Tom. So, I think a simple-- we did talk about this, a simple name, title, this keeps going back and forth, would be Highway Agent, and the building down there has always been referred to as the Highway Department, it stays the Highway Department down at the end of the street. Suggestion, you have the RSA's in front of you. It tells you that covers-- that title covers many responsibilities, which he does, and it's basic, simple, to the point. So, that's what I'm recommending.
Okay. Before I throw it open to the board for discussion, Tom, do you have any input on this?
Well, I think I have a few, you know, I like simple.
You might want to use--
Yeah.
I do like simple. And previously, the thought was DPW, highway. I typically don't hire someone and then let them choose their title. I thought we had discussed this previously. I'm almost sure, and I don't think it was ever set in stone. So-- And then I was thinking about it, and I said, well, I must be able to go back two years ago, or three years ago, in the minute somewhere, and the board should have decided DPW. If not, then it's still a Highway Garage to me. So it's, but it's not, I'm gonna be clear, until I own the town, it's not up to me. It is a board decision.
Of course.
And that is, you know, and if it became a DPW without a board decision, that's a problem. So we need to clearly define what it's going to be. It's been Highway forever. DPW. Would I take the job, whether it's a Highway Agent or a DPW Director? Yes. Semantics. That's, to me, it's all semantics. I have a job to do, I'll do it. But we need to decide as a town, as a board, what we are calling this, and that's it. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Ellen?
So I'm good with, I have it on. Highway Agent, I'm good with. And there had been discussion a long time ago, and I don't know why it didn't change, that Buildings and Grounds was simply gonna be called Municipal Properties. Can...
The issue...
No, 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 two things.
No, no, no. This talks about that. So as you remember, it used to be separate.
Right.
Alan Krupps.
Yep, I remember.
He retired. Rich St. Alea, one of our great people we had. Pulled that underneath him. So it fell under that umbrella. So in this, it defines that on the next page. It talks about the second page.
Oh, I'm sorry. Additional duties.
What this covers, additional duties, there's many duties that cover under his position. Many. But I mean, we can't just put them all under the title, because there'd be so many of them. So if somebody's looking for Buildings and Grounds, that falls under the direction of Highway Department.
It doesn't say that.
Well, it says cemeteries, there's numbers.
It takes care of the law, but not the buildings.
Correct, so it does.
So that's why we have to just clarify, and they have two, you have two budgets. I have no prob, I think Highway Agent is correct, and I think Highway Garage is correct, but I just think that...
I think we should simplify things as Highway Agent, and job description include Buildings and Grounds, in case it's not spelled clearly by the...
Yeah, well, correct. With that...
It does many things.
Yeah, and what that says, trash, collection center, grounds, buildings, landfill, those are stormwater, that's not on there either.
Building, you said Buildings though, right?
Yeah, they did.
Bridges are in here, I haven't seen Buildings.
So there's many things that fall under his...
Correct.
But not Buildings.
And that falls in the category, and any other duties as required.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I think we're splitting ears if you have to go that way.
So it is two budgets, but it's one department.
Okay, under...
It's just one department.
The MS 737, or whatever it's called?
Yep. So, and prior, when Rich St. Hilary was here, it was just Highway Department.
Right.
That was it. And that still counted, the Buildings and the maintenance and everything like that.
So we'll keep the budget separate, but the responsibilities will be under one type?
We have to keep the budget separate, but it's one department.
Well, then I think the motion should clarify that for future.
Can I ask a question, Paula? Why do they have to be separate? Is it because they used to be separate, and we just carried that over?
No, state, RSAs, the accounts are separate.
Okay.
It just is.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Yeah, the state sets what the accounts are. We don't have a control over them, is that correct?
Correct.
So make a motion that, for clarification, the person in charge of highways is the Highway Agent, who also has responsibility for Buildings, as well as anything listed in the RSA. Or you want that...
Overall, listed under him.
Okay. Stormwater, cemetery, landfill, Buildings. I mean, it says it in the RSA, so per RSA, 23162 responsibilities, which will include Buildings and Grounds. That's what we need.
Motion by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Peter. Discussion. Lori?
So we talked about a mailer last week that we need approved to be able to go out, and it was contingent upon this discussion. So is that mailer approved, contingent on we changed DPW to Highway Agent, or whatever the wording is?
Yeah, Highway Agent or Highway, depending on the personal location. Sure.
We have to take action on that, but that's not in this motion, though.
Well, we were just discussing it, so he asked if there were further discussions, so that's part of the, so that was contingent on that. So that, so we're saying Highway Agent is...
The person.
Is the person. The department is Highway Department.
And the building is Highway Garage.
So Lori, after we take this vote, if you want to bring up the issue of the mailer, we'll resolve that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous, okay. Lori?
So we don't have it in front of us, but last week, we presented a mailer, a direct mailer to go out for the Collection Center, and there was wording in there that said DPW. So changing DPW to Highway Department, can we approve the mailer?
Ellen's got it.
They all have a lot that just say DPW needs...
Yeah, I mean, Lisa can change that to Highway Department.
I'm fine, I looked at it, I'm fine with it, as long as the words are changed to meet the new definition of the department.
And it says above Facebook slash Kingston Public Works.
Well, a lot of things will have to be changed.
Okay, but that wasn't one of the things we talked about.
No, because we can't change that. I mean, that's what it is. A lot of things will have to be changed. So that's just gonna, just like their email address, right? So, I mean, that's just gonna take time.
Well, the email address here is Highway Agent.
Yeah, one of the emails still has Highway in it.
Yeah, that one's okay.
Anyone else want to look at that before we decide?
And the electronic waste and, I'm on, okay. The electronic waste and paper shredding, are those dates still tentative, or have they...
Yes, Lisa's still working with the vendors to come up with dates. These are mostly just to get the word out, so people will save the date. At least they know the month.
Just to remind folks, this is not a mailer that goes in the tax bill. This is a separate piece that's gonna go out, and there's a budget item for that in this current budget. And the budget will cover a couple of mailings, right?
It will cover four direct mailings. And we wanted to do one per quarter.
And it was what, six?
So are we good, Ellen? Did you have anything else on that?
You all set on that, Ellen?
Yeah. Yep, that was the only thing. Do you need a motion?
It would be good.
A motion to approve, I guess, the DPW, excuse me, no. The Kingston Collection Center information mailer with the changes that will have the correct titles instead of DPW.
Second.
Motion by Ellen, second by Peter. It's gonna take us all a while to get used to the nuance here.
I never called it that in my life until today.
Road Agent is the closest one that I can remember coming to.
Which is basically the same thing. They just clarified highways to the road.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. All right. Ellie, you said you thought that now would be a time that we should talk about the RFP?
Yeah, because I, when I hear what Paula's comments are about, she's supposed to have reviewed it before we get in, but I didn't know if there was any change in it.
Well, first of all, I did not do that. I finished this on the weekend, and I sent it to the board as a draft for us to take a look at. I'm happy to give my copy to Paula, so that she can look at it, and, or that one, okay. So, just so folks are, so that we're all on the same page with this, this is, bye, Abby?
Bye-bye.
This is a draft of an RFP that I put together using similar documents from three other towns, seeking a compensation and benefits study, which will essentially come up with, you know, a matrix and recommendations for compensation and so forth.
Can we vote on this next week and give Paula time to review it?
Yes.
I think it's okay, but I don't. But I'm not the expert in RFQs or RFPs.
We can just talk about it next week.
Yeah. I think we should vote on it next week and give Paula time to review it.
Do you also want counsel to look at it? Because I did not send it to counsel.
Probably a good idea.
I think so.
Susan, if you could send it to counsel as well, and then we'll have it on the agenda for next Monday. So as I said, it's a...
What's that, Paula?
Should I review it first?
Yes.
Send it to counsel, so that...
I think, yes, I agree.
We're not double...
You send it to counsel. I think that's the right way to go. Because if something you're suggesting hasn't been reviewed, if you change it after... You need to review it, and you might have some suggested changes, and those changes should go to counsel no matter what. So instead of going to counsel twice, we'll just go to counsel one time, is what I'm saying.
Will you have the time to review it this week, to be able to send it to counsel prior to seeing it next Monday, or, I know you have...
I'm going to a conference, but I'll have downtime, so we can communicate that.
Okay.
Thanks, Paula.
Going when we're ready?
Yeah.
So I'm seeing you here, you wrote on the sheet here for an RFQ, we're looking at an RFP, right? Just schematics.
Correct.
But when we're there, you know, we look at these as well, right, and the same thing? This is an RFQ for the electrical work that I talked about on the planes.
Okay, yep.
So I'd like to hand this out. I didn't get fancy and write draft on it.
No, it's fine. Well, the reason that I did RFP is because when I looked at the ones from the other towns, they were structured as proposals, as opposed to quote, which gives a little bit of flexibility. If you're asking for a quote, you're giving them specs, and you're getting a price for that.
This says RFQ, is it, are you doing an RFP or...
Yes, RFP. Which is what's on the document.
But this is not a Q though.
This one.
This is...
Two different things.
Two different things, yes, it is.
I know, that's a proposal, yeah.
Yes.
So I just wanted to really briefly kind of look at this real quick. It's not a quick thing, but I don't want to take up a lot of time with it. So I met with Stacy Dion, who dealt with a lot of the issues of electrical problems on the plane, breakers clicking back and forth, where we need power, trying to find the essentials of what we do need. Little diagram here, this is actually drawn to scale, thanks to our great building department head, Pedro. These are power situations over on the planes. Talked to Tom, the electrical inspector, Graham, the fire chief, as far as safety issues. And I actually, believe it or not, I'm going in front of the historical committee with it. I have an appointment with them. So one of the ideas we're looking to do is, on this print that, if you look at it real quickly, we're just adding on two extra locations for service. There're gonna be a pole, we cut down the height, it won't be sticking up near like a telephone pole, but it's important areas where they need power out on the planes. We have a 400 amp panel, 200 amp panels. Again, we built this in mind for future, so you can add on to this schematic if we'll get going on here. It's built for that reason. I actually am meeting this afternoon with Steve, a new member of the Buildings and Grounds, who, from what I understand, he's quite a handy person. We have... Sorry?
Just kidding, I said highway.
He is a handy person. That he's gonna, we're gonna design a small backboard, probably using like an Ajax decking, brown, again, historical committee we're gonna go to, with a small, like a shed roof protector over it, to be bolted to these poles, not only to help the longevity of the electrical service, but aesthetically to the eye, being on the planes in Kingston. We don't want great big whiteboards, we don't want big dog houses, we're trying to make it look nice. Probably have like little corbels on it to hold up the side of the roof. It's gonna look, they're actually gonna be pretty non-shod. So we're gonna have that all designed, and that will go before the historical committee just to kind of get their input on it. But a lot of thought and time went into this, as far as the measuring. The one pole at the bottom, down by Street Road, I lived in the town all my entire life, never knew that was Street Road, or that was Bunker Road.
I knew bunker, I never heard of Street though.
That's Street Road.
I knew bunker, but it's right.
And that's Street Road. But anyways, so I thought that was odd, but down where Street Road is, if you don't know where that is, that's directly across from Rick's. We have to maintain a 67-foot aerial cable, which is actually going across the road now. And that's gonna feed the new panel on the other side, there's a pole there existing. And on the bottom, again, where that 200 amp panel is, where it goes right and goes left of those 100 amps, those are currently above ground, those will be put underground. And then over where the 400 amp panel is on the left, up to the 100 amp on the left, that is currently above ground, that will be going below ground. And the only thing we're looking at is this trench 231 feet across the plains, that's gonna have to be upgraded to a two-and-a-half inch pipe, because that's gonna be changed to a 200 amp service to bring more power to the side of the plains. So that will be, again, 200 amp to get enough wire, big enough to go through that small distance, small pipe distance. Pretty much all the same way it's sitting out there, but it's just upgraded for safety and code requirements.
And potential for expansion.
And built for expansion.
So the, on the other side of Street Road, it's 100 amp service. We didn't want to upgrade that to, for expansion?
We, yeah.
Because there's a lot of folks who, one of those festivals out there, a lot of people needed power. They didn't have it, so...
Correct, so you're 100% right. This definitely can, there's actually a meter, another meter, count the plane from there.
Yeah.
That we've also looked at, and we've looked at the meter next to the van stand.
Okay.
Right, so there's tons of areas for expansion. Anything here will not have to be redone. We can add to all this stuff.
Okay.
Yes, it is, it was thought about that. That's why we brought 200 down at that bottom, because that's actually a meter, where that's this 200 amp panel. That, there's a pole laying on the ground down there, we had big safe come in.
Right.
That will be set this week. Talked to historical area about it, it's just replacing an existing. We're not doing anything new until I talk to them.
So if you're gonna extend to the gazebo, how are you gonna do that with this?
We don't have to go to the gazebo. The gazebo has a meter there. That's got a meter there.
So we would upgrade that at some point if we needed to?
Some, yes. What we're gonna do with that right now, we're gonna add a couple more plugs on, because the issue we had down there with the people running the fair, didn't have enough 110 to keep refrigerators cold, blah, 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 blah. So they're gonna do that, and I think under the direction of Tom, this is the big expense. This is the infrastructure of the whole plane, right here, this is what you're looking at. And what I think you're gonna see down the road is if we upgrade the one by the van stand, we can bring that underground to the one that's in front of the old Burley Law Office. Right now, it goes over the road, those are two brand-new poles, set in by a vendor, didn't cost us anything, because they wanted to run their power off. The vendor put those green poles, not us. So that would actually come from the other way, from the van stand where the transformer is. But again, that's like another leg of the project. It's just, there's so much undertaking on this main brain right here, that this is what we want to tap first, that's what the price is gonna be.
And do we have a sense for what this cost is gonna be?
We've had, we had, we had one come in from our inspector, and it drove that cost to the point that we have to go to that RFQ.
Go out to bid, right?
Correct. So there was things on that bid that were missing, the one, the original one, so I honestly just don't want to throw the number at you now.
No, that's fine. So the threshold for going out to bid is 25?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so it's likely to be over that?
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so I would, and this is just to get it out there, because I do know the, probably the process, I was talking to Tom, if, when we get this all figured, the board makes the decision, what we'll do is we'll go, we'll have somebody come up and disconnect the services there, which is very, very bad shit, and they're gonna tear all that stuff out of it. And then they can start building the boards and getting kind of everything ready to go. And, Highway Department will go down and dig the trenches, do all of the work on the ground purpose, put the sand in the trenches, they've already dug, dealt with the whole trenching issue, and then we even get everything back together again and hopefully use it this August.
When do we want to do this? When do we want to get this out on the street for people to bid for us to start?
That's, as soon as you guys look at this, and you're okay with this, we're gonna send it out. We want to get this like going.
So is this like your proposal right here?
This is one proposal for you to look at, as the board.
All right.
As far as, and our request for a quote, because basically this is telling our applicants what we want.
Right.
So we have something they're gonna quote on this project.
Okay.
Yeah, in this case, you really, you really don't want a proposal, you want a quote, because you know what the job is.
Correct.
Now you just need to know the money part.
Correct.
So, I have a question.
That's my question.
Oh.
I'm, I don't know how long this may or may not have been being discussed and stuff, so where's the money coming from?
The idea was for it to come from the infrastructure fund, which is the interest...
Oh, I know what it is.
Okay, all right.
So the reason we did that, we first originally talked about it before you came...
Yes.
About possibly getting this out of our, right?
Right.
The situation, and I apologize, I'm repeating myself, that whole entire system came out of the Kingston Fairgrounds.
Yes.
And if you open up any one of those panels...
Oh no, I'm with you.
Multiple knockouts all missing, and it's just live power.
Oh no, I'm with you on that. I just wondered where the money was coming from.
Yeah, so we made a decision as the board to move this forward, and there was a little mix in the conversation loss in the middle of the winter time with Tom, because he thought, because the aqua wasn't available, the whole project was thrown.
I got you.
And we did decide that it has to be done.
Sure.
So that's...
That's my only question.
Yeah.
It's like, what's the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, and on the RFQ, if Peter's good with it, I'm good with it. He knows more about this than I do, so...
So I have a question. Just looking at it, under, on the page two, under other...
Yes.
It says, "All trenching and digging will be done by others." That means that we're not asking the bidder to include that.
That's correct.
So maybe we'd be doing the trenching, or, okay.
And, and one other thing that I missed on this, that will be added before it goes out, that was actually picked up by Paula. We'll probably make a note on there for, obviously insurance.
Insurance, yep.
Yep, we want, we want an insurance license contract to doing this, so.
And we're, and we're saying that they, it requires a permit, but we're not gonna charge a fee for it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And one more thing that you just mentioned, the removal of the interesting services and disconnection, we'll put that in there as well.
To be honest with you, I don't think we'll have to do that, if we can get, if we can get a bidder, right, if we just get him in, just disconnect it, like a long extension cord, right, where you can't plug in. Then these guys can go down and tear all that stuff out of it, because all that is basically, they're gonna step out. You don't have to be licensed to do that, definitely. They'll have to have somebody, probably unit to disconnect that panel, the 400 amp panel inside, somebody's gonna go down and just pull it up.
Okay.
So they'll probably do the overhead on that, give it up for the power of the plane to do that.
But that's not...
Part of the quote, right?
Yeah, you need to...
That will be all, okay.
I just heard them mention it.
Yeah.
So with regard to the timeline, Peter, it says, "As soon as possible after selection."
Correct.
Do we want to try to pin it down and give our preferred time for it to be done?
That's a great idea.
Yes.
So I believe when I, when I, my brain thinking of that was, start as soon as possible.
Okay.
But to be completed by, we should definitely do a date. Absolutely.
Because if we expect to have this in time to use it for...
Well, next to... What about Brew Fest? We don't want all of this going on.
They're not a Brew Fest issue.
They're not doing a Brew Fest? All right, is there anything else planned for the planes?
The only thing we have is the library, I mean, I'm sorry, the cemetery, that's in May.
That's in May, right.
That's in May, so I don't know much, I don't know planes, Paula, they're gonna need.
Right.
And then, we're working on this, still working on this whole group to get together and talk about possibly a Kingston date, but that will be the last week of August.
Okay.
Last weekend. So that's really the only thing I have on radar, that I saw on radar for the planes.
Oh, the museum committee, if you do something, they did heritage days last year.
That's usually in August.
It is, but they did that whole car show thing, they did it at the school last year.
Oh, okay, all right.
If we get, if we get this out, if we get this out, I think, I think we could write August first.
That's what I was thinking.
To be completed by August first.
The only other thing that is going on down there, and I don't think it'll interfere, we'll know more when Sandborne Head is in, but they're doing their site investigation, fieldwork, and that involves wells going in on the plains.
That shouldn't interfere.
It shouldn't interfere.
I, I wouldn't think, but just keep it in mind.
Yeah, they, they would just have to have these, like, they could have these plans...
We could provide them with a map, just so they know where the work is gonna be taking place.
Work with that if they think they're gonna put a well right in the middle of where we're gonna dig.
Yep.
I mean, they already, and they already...
When they're coming, I can talk to them.
Sure, and they already have their own map.
Yes.
So they know sort of where they're gonna be going, and it's a matter of looking at the two and comparing.
So it wants to be completed by one August.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, like I said, as soon as, as soon as we get the insurance issue completed by one August, is there anything else on there that needs to be added or changed?
So if we get these out today is the 31st, is this April 15?
Is that enough time?
Is that enough time?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking two weeks, to be honest with you. If we did those out tomorrow, I think tomorrow's the day I got it, tomorrow.
Is that enough time for people to turn it around? I, I don't know, I mean, I don't...
That's a, that's a pretty short window.
That's a pretty...
All right, so you want to do it three weeks?
I'd do at least three weeks.
Three weeks.
All right, so we're gonna change it to three weeks, three weeks from tomorrow.
Which would be?
Fifteen, 22nd.
Okay.
Twenty second.
What, what day of the week is that, before we say that?
Thursday, ah, Tuesday, Tuesday's the 22nd, right? Tomorrow's the...
Seven, 15, 22nd, yep.
22nd. So three weeks to 22nd, the bid's gonna be in by, and to be completed by August 1, 25.
Yep.
And the insurance will be requested on that.
Paula, do we have specific limits that we request on the, on the insurance? Is it like a million, two million, or is it...
It kind of depends on the project, but it's minimally a million.
Okay. And I'm assuming that, that the town is, is named as an additional insured?
Yes.
All right. And Peter, you're comfortable with the materials list, you and Tom?
We, we looked at it, and to be honest with you, there's a couple of things that we added on. Any, any electrician, to be honest with you, who's gonna look at this, that's a guideline, right?
Right.
That's a guideline.
Okay.
Because we, we actually went out and hand-measured everything on the plane, literally rolled everything out. So we tried to give them a ballpark on that list, just so you could kind of look at it. But, that pole that's gonna be added is, if you're driving around today and you want to take a look, there's stakes on the planes.
Yep.
So there's a stake halfway down the plains on Rick's side, and there's a new stake in this corner in front of Lynn Merrill's building. That's gonna be the location of the two new poles, after I talk to them historically.
Yep.
That, that's just what I, we did the dig save and stuff then.
Okay.
For the way those are gonna go, but we're gonna talk to them first.
So at the bottom of the materials list, it says, "Any additional materials needed based on the attached drawing, please provide a breakdown, items..." So when the quotes come in, they should have identified anything that they think might be needed in addition.
Correct.
And priced it up.
Correct.
Are we gonna, to just go off of that, are we gonna request a line item cost, or just a bottom dollar?
I'm gonna be honest with you, it's usually, usually when you bid materials like that, it's a bottom dollar.
Mm-hmm.
Because, hate to say it, there's usually a little bit of budget in there.
Sure.
Because if they could get something, so it kind of can move a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're trying to hold up to that exact price, things are commodities, right? Glass and everything else, they do bump up and down. So if you get an over, you go for 800 bucks on a job of this extent, it's probably not an odd question.
Right, but we could request, like, they, they do their proposal, and then we could go back and request...
Yeah.
A breakdown.
Correct.
Right? I mean, because you're asking right here, if there's additional materials needed, you're, you're asking for a breakdown of those items and pricing, but you're not asking for a breakdown of pricing.
I probably, I probably, I probably would delete, to be honest with you, Laurie, now that you mention that, I probably would be the breakdown on the pricing, to be honest with you.
You would delete that?
Yeah, I would delete that.
Okay.
Depending on what supply shop you're buying.
Okay, because it just wasn't matching those two.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
That was like a, a couple of my favorite words.
Sure, yep.
So you're saying you're gonna scratch the, the words that say...
Please, yeah, please provide, from there on, scratch.
Please provide, okay.
Additional materials based on an attached drawing.
Yeah.
So they can explain where it's going.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I mean, they're, yeah.
Correct.
We realized we needed X, Y, and Z. Okay, got it.
Because I gotta be honest with you, I think that Tom and I were talking with Graham, and I believe this pole at this end was an added thought, because they wanted something in that corner.
Yeah.
The safety and power, whole nine yards. So that was, that pole was added after I made that list. So it could fluctuate a little bit, see what I'm saying? So we'll just wait till their proposals come back. The biggest thing is the drawing is correct.
Yep.
What are your thoughts to put it on the agenda?
As far as what? As far as, well, it's, it's, I, I would like to know, what do you mean, on the agenda to decide on this, or the agenda to...
To review, you're gonna get these things...
So, so...
Yes.
We would, we would do it at the, the next soonest board meeting.
28.
What? To expand from that fund...
Right, it needs a, it needs a public hearing. We don't need a public hearing to accept the bid.
No.
No.
If you're gonna help to inspect from the fund, you need a public hearing.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure that we have all access in the world, so we are...
So if we plan to, if we plan to do the money part at the same time that we do the bid selection, quote selection, then needs to be a public hearing.
Is it just one, that, one public hearing?
I believe so.
I think it's only one.
I think it's one.
And, and this is enough time? Is there a requirement of notice for a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
How much time?
I think it's only, like, a week.
Oh, okay, then we have plenty of time, okay.
Well, if it's, if it's anything like the lane use boards, it's 10 clear days.
We're still good, because it's...
I don't, I don't know if it's the same as...
The 31st.
Or not.
Posted now.
We're fine.
Posted now.
Yep, posted now.
If we post it now, we're fine.
But wouldn't you open the bids one day and then review them, and then decide?
Typically, that's, typically, that's what we do.
So we shouldn't set the date to...
I would think you would do the public...
The week after that, I have a follow-up, but I think a public hearing will... As opposed to, some, we could usually have...
Uh, 28 is a, is a...
Is the boarding event.
The boarding meeting.
It'll be open that day, and then there's a public hearing following the week.
That, or Monday meeting, so whatever that is.
Okay, so open bids...
Yeah, that's the date. Page 10, that's what I think so. The bids on the 28th.
For 28. Public hearing on May 5. Okay.
And then that would give the company, May, June, and July on, three months to work.
Yeah. So... So Peter, so if we do the public hearing on the 5th, and we want the work completed by August 1st, that gives the company three months to do it, May, June, and July.
Good.
Right? That's doable, right?
Oh yeah.
Should be.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We should probably do a motion for all this stuff.
That's the motion. All of the stuff that we just said.
So, so maybe first of all, a motion to, to proceed with the RFQ as amended, based on discussion this morning. To add and delete those things that we talked about that are in the minutes.
So moved.
All right, motion by Laurie, second by Ellen. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, unanimous. And then a motion to, to conduct, conduct a bid opening on April 28, and subsequently a public hearing to, to do the funds for this on May 5.
So moved.
Mr. Court question.
Yeah.
As soon as we get these completed changes, get them right out.
and subsequently a public hearing, uh, to, uh, to do the funds for this on May fifth.
So moved.
Mr. Court question.
Yeah.
As soon as we get these completed changes, get them right out.
Yes.
I just make sure that's bottom.
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Motion by Lori. Second by Ellen. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, that's unanimous.
Can, can I ask how much interest is in that fund? Do we have that available right now? I can get back to you later. Thank you.
Last I looked, there is more than enough to cover this, but.
That's my question.
I understand. We'll have that number by the time we make a decision on the funding. All right.
I'm gonna make a motion to recess.
We have a public comment.
Oh, we have a public comment? Sorry, you can do that first.
Well, we can do that. Uh, public comment number one. Once, twice, gone. Thank you.
I'm gonna suggest that we, hopefully, we can just recess, right? We don't have to adjourn.
No, recess.
All right. So I'm gonna recess the Select Board meeting at ten twenty-five. Uh, we do have a public hearing, you have, no, we have a Board of Health meeting scheduled for ten thirty, so we'll use this five minutes as a quick break. Right, so the, the, the cameras and the mics are still live, so just keep, keep that in mind, keep that in mind, shut your mics off. Okay. Should we have them sit to the side, like, uh, for better hearing for the audience, or?
They, they're using the overhead though, right?
Yeah, but they, they're laptops right there.
It's just from the laptop.
Yeah, but.
We're discussing whether or not to have you guys move to the side, only because, um, the acoustics in here are really not very good, and when you're speaking this way to us, folks in the audience have a hard time hearing. So if you could just move to, and, uh, Evy? If, if you could scoot down, please? All right, so it's ten thirty-four. Uh, we'll go ahead and convene the meeting of the Kingston Board of Health, uh, which consists of the Select Board, uh, the Health Inspectors, and that's it, right? Those are the, those are the components, okay. And we have guests with us here to, uh, to do a presentation for us. Uh, I'm gonna do the introductions again, just so that we have it on record and that we have our guests identified. Uh, so from Board of, from, from our Health Department, we have Pedro Avia, our Building Inspector and Health Officer, yes, and then Kevin Schultz, Deputy Health Officer, okay. And then Board members Ellen Faulkner, Peter Baiki, Ali Alasio, Glenn Koppelmann, Laurie Swed, Administrative Assistant Susan Eyre, and you gentlemen are with Sandborne Head. And if you could introduce yourselves for us, please?
Yeah, I'm Bill Marr. I'm a Senior Project Manager with Sandborne Head and.
Yes, and I'm Russ Abel. I'm a Senior Vice President with Sandborne Head.
Russ, what was your last name, please?
Uh, Abel, A-B-E-L-L.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear us?
So those microphones should, do you each have one? Okay, and if you could just set it on the table in front of you and make sure that the light is green when you speak, uh, then you're, then you're in good shape. It's still red, so make sure you, okay. It's best just to turn it on and leave it on.
Sounds good.
Ellen. Oh, Evy Nathan is the Chair of our Conservation Commission, and the reason she's sitting here is because, uh, it's, it's difficult for her to hear in the audience. So she asked if she could sit at the table, so that's why she's here. Thank you. All right, so are we, um, are we going right to the presentation? I assume so. And, and just as a, just a sort of an introduction point, the, um, uh, there's any number of reasons why the, uh, the Board of Health meets, but, um, we have this ongoing issue of PFAS contamination of our water, uh, in and around the fire station area of town, and so, uh, Sandborne Head is our consultant who, uh, works on a lot of this for us, and we thought it would be good for, uh, them to do a little presentation, bring us up to date, and we can get into some Q and A afterwards, if that's okay with the Board. So I'll turn it over to you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you, yeah, good morning. Once again, I'm Bill Marr with Sandborne Head, and I thought today we would give you an update on the status of the PFAS investigation associated with the fire station. Because I know there's been some changes on, on the board and also with staff in town, we thought we'd kind of take a, a quick step back on kind of how we got here, go over the background, talk about what we're doing currently for response actions, and then what is coming in the future, and we'll also touch on, sort of, part of those future actions would be the groundwater management and notifications associated with, um, the ongoing actions. So we'll jump right into it. So, uh, per and polyfluoroalcohol substances are just a group of man-made chemicals. What really characterizes them is this carbon-fluorine bond, and, and that's why they're known as forever chemicals, because that bond is one of the strongest in this organic chemistry. So they're very persistent in, once they get into the environment. That's why they've, um, been so widely used in consumer products and in manufacturing products, because they're able to repel stain, uh, they're also heat resistant, so they're commonly found in things like Teflon cookware, also Scotchgard, Gore-Tex, food packaging, kind of, you think about fast containers and grease. Uh, they're also used in aqueous firefighting foam, uh, like what was at the fire station. So there's over twelve thousand individual chemicals within this, uh, currently, and we'll get into this, there's only four regulated, but when we talk about the data as a whole, you'll see a, a large number of compounds presented. Uh, and they've been in use since about the nineteen forties, um, like I said, in both, consumer and industrial products. So when it comes to the regulated compounds in New Hampshire, and there, there's four that are currently regulated, there's PFOA, which is perfluoroatonic acid, I'm gonna watch for some of these, Russ, to step in.
Just do the accuracy.
Yeah, PFOS, PFNA, and PFHXS, and the state has, uh, issued two, both groundwater and soil standards for each of these and kind of, which is shown in the column. So AGQS is the Ambient Groundwater Quality Standard, which, um, is what all groundwater has to meet, and in the case, like, the fire station, when there are exceedances of that, it needs to be remediated. And there's also the Soil Remediation Standard, which, uh, is, you know, specific to soil, and again, if, if you're above it, it, and associated with the release, it needs to be addressed. You know, recently, I think in two thousand twenty-four, EPA also issued a new lower limit for PFOA and PFOS in drinking water of four nanograms a liter, and you can kind of see when you compare that, it's an order of magnitude less than the current groundwater quality standard, and, um, so for sites that are, you know, providing drinking water in the future, they'll, uh, we anticipate they'll likely need to meet that lower standard. And for perspective, we're talking about really, really small numbers. So one nanogram of liter, uh, per liter is equivalent to like one drop of water in twenty Olympic-sized swimming pools. So it's very small amount of, uh, basically constituents can impact a large, uh, you know, a large volume of water, so. It doesn't take a lot to get into, to, to get into a violation of AGQS. So as a little kind of background, kind of high level of how we kind of got here, so as some of you residents may recall, back in two thousand sixteen, the town was experiencing a drought, and the fire station, uh, well was open to provide, uh, water to residents whose wells had gone dry. And in September of two thousand sixteen, NHDS sampled the well for PFOS or, you know, PFAS, and the results at the time indicated that PFOA and the combined PFOA-PFOS exceeded the then Ambient Groundwater Policy Standard. So fully thereafter, NHDS, and so when I say, and I apologize for, uh, not saying this, but NHDS is the Department of Environmental Services, so they are the ones who have the charge of regulating the groundwater, the groundwater in the state. So they took on the initial responsibility, and they performed some off-site sampling of fifteen water supply wells, and at that time, three of the, three of the wells also showed, had exceedances for AGQS. And they took that data and, in early two thousand seventeen, notified the town, using the background, that data they'd collected at the fire department, and named the town as responsible party. And at that point, when the state names anyone as responsible party, whether it's municipality or private corporation, that responsible party has to take on the obligation of doing the investigation and remediating the impacts. So over, the first thing, uh, whenever you become a responsible party is to conduct a site investigation under the rules. And so Stantec Consulting Services, uh, undertook an investigation in the timeframe from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, and confirmed the presence of PFAS in groundwater, and also found it in site soil and sediment. Uh, the sediment was associated with the then former dry well for the floor drains at the old fire station that was demolished. Uh, they also found VOCs, which are volatile, volatile organic, uh, compounds, thing, think of, things like, um, gasoline would fall into that, a lot of those additives, um, also like chlorinated solvents would fall into those. Uh, PAHs and metals were also in that dry well sediment. And the conclusion, uh, that Stantec came to is that we need to do more soil and groundwater sampling to sort of basically, to delineate those impacts.
Do you have a map of the wells that were tested and the ones that were paused on it?
Yeah, but we, we will, so, uh, we will get to sort of the current state with, with the map of where the impacts are, um, in, in the next slide after this. So over the course of two thousand eighteen, uh, you know, there was back and forth between DES and the town, uh, through their consultants at the time, Stantec, requesting that the dry well be eliminated and that they implement a water quality monitoring program, and also further delineate the off-site impacts of PFAS. And so that, uh, went through the period of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and when it concluded was, um, well, in that time period, this is actually a really important note, so I mentioned initially the then AGQS, so in the middle of all this, the state lowered the standard to what I showed in the earlier slide. So at that time, when it lowered the standard, it also brought in a larger number of properties with wells that were impacted, right? So there were ones that were sort of had PFAS but wasn't over the then limit, and when they lowered the limit, a larger group was brought in. Um, through two thousand nineteen, there was continued sampling, and eventually in two thousand twenty-two, there was a little bit of a gap there, uh, where there wasn't a lot of work that occurred, and in two thousand twenty-two, uh, Stantec submitted sort of their summary data to the state. At that time, the state responded, requesting basically a focused site investigation. At that time, this is when Sandborne Head got involved, was in, uh, late, kind of mid to late two thousand twenty-two, and we, uh, put together a focused site investigation, uh, which basically brought all the data that had been collected to date and submitted in individual submitals into one package, and provided that to DES, and we did that. That was submitted in May two thousand twenty-three. And what that kind of looked like, and I think to the question here is, you know, what did we find? So this, there's a lot of information being shown here, but basically, all the circles represent an individual well that was sampled. The bigger the circle, the, the, the larger the magnitude of the impacts, so, you know, like, over one thousand parts per trillion would be the largest circle, and the second largest would be a hundred to one thousand parts per trillion, but remember, we're talking about AGQS limits that are in the tens. So most of these locations are immediately around the fire station, kind of fall into that zone where there was an AGQS exceedance.
Bill, can you point out the different geographic locations for folks?
Yeah, so the fire station parcel is this box right here, and this inset kind of shows the wells on, on the box. And the colors represent the individual fractions, so the bigger the pie slice, the more of that particular PFAS chemical, uh, that's in that. And what you'll kind of see as you look at this is that there's kind of certain patterns that start to develop, you know, these wells are similar looking, and these, and the, but these wells are different, but these wells are similar, and you'll kind of see throughout here, you know, these residential wells as you go away from the fire station, and some of them have similar signatures, but when you come over here, there's like a larger impact, you know, the bigger the circle, the bigger the impact, but very different coloring than what we see on site. And so this is, at the time of the focused site investigation, which, when that was submitted in two thousand twenty-three, this was the current state of data. And one of the things, uh, you know, when we look at sites, we, we look at how could potential contamination flow from one property to another. Most of the impacts that we've been, um, analyzing are overburdened groundwater, which is basically the groundwater above bedrock. It, bedrock has not been ignored, there is some bedrock data, but the primary focus of the investigation to date has been in overburdened groundwater, and the arrows on this, uh, figure show what we believe to be is the overburdened groundwater flow direction from, I think it's Greenwood to Great Pond, and then from the fire station sort of towards that main pathway between the ponds. There's a little uncertainty in, that's what these sort of dashed arrows are for, is how groundwater is flowing in this area of where we've been investigating. When we talk about what's to come, part of our effort is to sort of understand this difference.
One other thing about the differences in the colors that you see, the different types of compounds, is they can mean a couple different things. They can mean there might be different sources that those compounds came from. So for instance, you could look at the, um, the, uh, the location up on the, up close to the town hall there that has a lot of PFOS, that's the dark purple color that represents about half that circle, versus the yellows that show up down from the fire department. So you could interpret that to be two different sources of the compound, you know, one came from one type of use, one came from another. The other thing that can happen is that the types of compounds that you see in wells will change as you move away from a source, so you could start with what the types of compounds are right near where the PFAS came into the ground, but then as you move in groundwater down away from that, those com, the types of compounds change because they behave differently as they move. The longer compounds tend to move more slowly than the shorter compounds, and so, um, you can actually see a change. So it becomes very complicated when we look at all these data to try to understand what the different chemistries are telling us, and so we have to incorporate that with the understanding of which way groundwater is flowing, whether we're looking at wells that are in the soil above bedrock, the overburden, or we're looking in wells that are the bedrock groundwater, because they're, they have different properties that control them based on what's in them. So there's a lot of complexity that has to be thought about to understand where, if there's multiple sources of PFAS at a site, and how those compounds change with distance from where they were put into the ground, so that we can fully understand what all these different circles mean on the map, if that makes sense.
So where are we today? So as of now, there's twenty-seven point-of-entry treatment systems, so for the properties that have AGQS exceedances that have persisted, so that multiple rounds of data have said, hey, there is an issue here, the town has installed twenty-seven of these point-of-use treatment systems to treat the groundwater coming, or to treat the drinking water coming in, and they're sampled on an annual basis. Uh, there's one property receiving bottled water right now, and there's six water supply wells that are sampled on a semi-annual to annual basis. As Russ was alluding to, you know, looking at the site is pretty complicated, there's a lot of things to take into effect, but in our, with the data we have at hand, we, we do think there's a suggestion, uh, that there's multiple sources, not just the fire station that we're seeing in the data. There's impacts of both overburden, which is really. There's impacts of both overburden, which is really the focus of most of our work, but there's also some in bedrock. And as I was showing in that figure, groundwater flow from the fire station is, tends to be west to southwest and flow to that north where those question marks are, we still need to understand. But the good news is, is the concentrations of PFAS to date that we've seen are generally stable or decreasing. So what that means is we're not seeing a contribution from the source continuing. You know, we're not putting HPF in the ground continuously, right? Otherwise, we'd expect to see the numbers in those wells to continue to go up, but they're, they're just not doing that. So where are we going from here? Or I guess what we're right in the middle of is, you know, the state has requested a supplemental site investigation. And so right now, there's a request for proposals out that, out to bid for consultants to submit costs to perform the sub, the fieldwork portion of the site investigation, which includes addressing questions that DES has had regarding the dry well, without, because they, it wasn't, they had questions about the data when it was closed, the former septic areas at the fire station as potential sources. The Kingston Plains is an area that DES has requested some additional work on, and then we're going to continue to do some overburdened groundwater monitoring, and we're going to install twelve new overburdened wells to get a better understanding, along with this surface water gauges, to get a better understanding of groundwater flow direction. And all of these will, results will be incorporated into a report and support the groundwater management permit application that will be due kind of end of Q2, beginning of Q3.
Yeah, and a groundwater management application is a requirement by the state whenever you have groundwater that's above the standard. In state law, all groundwater needs to meet the standard, so if you're not, if you're above the standard, then you have to have the special permit to allow you to do the work to achieve the groundwater quality below that standard. So the cleanup work, the investigation work, it's just a complication of how the state does things. So that's why we have to apply for that application, and then it has regular requirements for collecting samples and reporting to the state during the period in which you are, you know, managing the site and, and working out the water quality and doing any cleanup or treatment that needs to be done.
And just to kind of briefly show, you know, where we're proposing some of these additional sampling locations. So the orange circles around sort of the magenta and red dots are, these would be new wells that will be installed sometime this summer. Again, you can see you're kind of spread out throughout the investigation area to get a better understanding of the groundwater flow direction. You can, here is, this is sort of an inset of the fire station in more in detail. These were approximately where the former septic area was, so there's the borings I talked about there. This is the former dry well area where the state's asked for additional information. And then when the fire station was reconstructed, we, they, we lost this monitoring well and the state's asked that it get replaced. So that's what this location's for. And then down in here is sort of an area of investigation specific to the Kingston Plains that the state had requested. So where do we go after this? We're going to do all this work this summer, we're going to put a report in, and as Russ had alluded to, you know, the groundwater management permit is something that is just, it's part of the rules and that the state will issue. And it is, it's a, it's a five-year permit, but it's, it's reoccurring. You know, you're basically, until you've gone below those AGQS, but below the groundwater standards, you'll continually have to reapply for it. And what, what it does is it sets a formal monitoring program on a regular reporting basis. It also establishes a O1M program for the POET, so everything will be sort of consistent. And then there'll be a, what they call a periodic summary report. I suspect it will be annual. Sometimes as these things go on, they, they do allow it to be every other year, but I wouldn't anticipate that for at least the first, you know, the first five years, I would think it's going to be annual every year. And then there's always the what-if. DES could, after all this, still request more work. Specifically, what will happen is if the GMZ is delineated and we continue to find exceedances at or right beyond that boundary, that means that area needs to be expanded, and so they may ask us to do that. And like I also mentioned, we've been focusing on overburden, and that's where we've seen most of the impacts, that's where most of the wells are located for residential drinking water, but there is a bedrock component that DES could come back and ask to be investigated, but they haven't yet, so we're hoping that they'll continue to do the, will continue to focus on the overburden and close that out. And then just a little bit of definitions here, you know, the groundwater management permit, it was specific, will be issued to the town as a responsible party, and like I said, it's, it just formalizes the management monitoring and controls, and this is a big one. The groundwater management permit combined with that groundwater management zone, which is basically that volume of water that is contaminated, it implements controls so that drinking water is restricted, either usually by easement, sometimes there's other forms of ownership interest recorded, but basically it says, you know, you can't put a new well in without it getting sampled. If it's sampled and over, then they'll likely require a POET system to be installed. And it's, it's a protective measure for, for the property owners.
Yeah, and that groundwater management zone just defines the area on the map where the contamination is. So properties that are within the zone, those are properties that it's either understood or suspected that there's contamination in the groundwater beneath those properties. So the zone, it just puts a, a box on the map that those properties are in, so you know where the contamination has been found and where it hasn't, associated with the release. So if we, if there are multiple sources and, and those are determined not to be related to the town, then those would not, may not necessarily be in the management zone, because they would be related to a different responsible party that would have to go through a similar process potentially. But when, also when you're dealing with very, very low concentrations, you know, that Bill explained before, sometimes it's hard to find a particular source for some of the compounds, because these were readily used in commerce, and so they can show up in groundwater, even in areas where there's not really a known, you know, a known point source where someone discharges or, or the materials were disposed of on ground. It's just based on the common use and it ending up in things like septic systems and things of that sort. So there can be some of that as well in areas, particularly areas that have a lot of dense, you know, close homes and businesses and things of that sort.
And then the last slide here, as far as sort of some information to present, is there's been some discussion recently on notification requirements, so I thought I'd just provide kind of a summary. So, you know, to be specific, under, so all this work is conducted under what's referred to as ENV OR 600, or the Contaminated Site Management Rules. So if there's basically impacted groundwater or soil in the state, the cleanup and the investigation is all done under this set of rules. The, the ENV OR 600 is also a specifies notification requirements when there are violations of groundwater quality that come up during these investigations. So, and they were reissued in December two thousand twenty-four, so these are new requirements, some of these are new requirements, specifically the immediate notification requirement. So, you know, as a responsible party, if the town becomes aware of, you know, a well coming up with a new violation where, you know, there hasn't been any issues before and all of a sudden now you're over the standard, you have to immediately notify the state and then also notify the property owner. And then typically, it's usually done verbally. We, we recommend and we follow up usually with written correspondence to the state. And then there's the, part of the provision references sort of the safe alternate water. So if it is a water supply well where there's a violation, you need to provide alternative water in, until it can either be confirmed or a more permanent measure can be put into place, like a POET system, for example. And that's what we have, and so I'm happy to take questions.
We got a few.
Good.
Okay, Peter, go.
Got a, got a couple of things. So one of the slides you showed when you first started off, you named a bunch of benefiting things, Teflon, Gore-Tex, Scotch bright, and there's a bunch of things you named that was benefiting that has PFAS in it.
Yep.
And the one negative thing on it was firefighting. So my question to you is, are there other items besides firefighting foam that have PFAS in them that could be detrimental to groundwater?
Yeah, it's a whole host of things. I mean, things that DES is looking at now, you know, there's letters that have been sent to a lot of schools because of the, the floor stripping and wax, you know, a lot of consumer cleaning products, right? And so that, you know, that's been a kind of a topic of interest in the state.
Asbestos?
Not asbestos. It's sort of, it's, it's in its own kind of category. You know, it's used in a lot of industrial settings as well. It was used as like a fume suppressant metal finishing, but I think what we'll find in, around here is because it was prevalent in so many of those consumer products, and even though like Scotchgard may have never been dumped down your drain, like you put it on your clothes and you laundry your clothes and it comes out in the washwater, right? And so you see these small accumulations over time. And what DES is starting to see, they're, they're doing more private septic work, and they're sampling the sludge and then the, in, in the, in the water in the septic tanks, and they're finding it there from just residential use, because it's, it's common in so many just household products. So it isn't necessarily like, yeah, I had a big factory and, you know, this stuff was going down the drain all day or out the stack. It's, it's very common in so many, just coatings, carpet cleaners is a big one too, that, you know, you'll see that time to time.
Okay, so I guess my point of my question was, it could be coming from additional sources and not justified by, correct? Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
That's a fair statement.
That's a fair statement.
There's a lot of stuff that we've had history in this town that could be coming from.
Yes.
And if I understand the, the water flow, a lot of the water flow will actually go south, and then it migrates towards Kingston Lake, would, is it possible for PFAS to go upstream in a water source, or is it usually just flows with water?
So, no, yeah, no, the, the groundwater flow direction is very important. The thing to keep in mind is that if we consider the soil, the soil groundwater flow is pretty standard to understand, because the soil is like a sandbox, more or less, right? So you put water, if the sandbox is on a slope, you put water at the top, it's going to flow downhill, right? The challenge with bedrock is, the, the bedrock is old bedrock, and, and so it doesn't have porosity like a sand does, right? It's, it's got a very interlocking matrix, so only fractures within the rock. So what happens there is still groundwater flow direction, the gradient, is really important, right? So you're not going to flow uphill, but the fractures don't go in a straight line along with the gradient, they're in a matrix, you know, crisscross, like a tic-tac-toe puzzle type of thing, right? And so they can move in a little bit different directions in the general area of where groundwater wants to go. And the other thing is, is that for bedrock, bedrock may not find, the, the two ponds nearby may not be the place that that bedrock flow is going, it may be going to a nearby river that's much bigger water discharge location. So it's all based on hydraulics and things of that sort. So you could have, in bedrock, you could have groundwater flowing in an apparent different direction because of the difference in where you are with comparison to a larger area, right? So think of a watershed. So, you know, a river has a watershed, all the water's going to flow down into that river. So the bedrock, you know, and locally, near, in a, near town, may be flowing towards that river, whereas the surface water is flowing towards the two ponds, because they're up elevated, they, that's where the water goes. So there's two different sources of where the water goes. So if the, and we haven't looked at this in great detail yet, but those are things that we have to include in our analysis and assessment. So the overburdened groundwater, this is a sandy material, it's, it's a, we call it stratified drift, it's the outwash from glaciers, so it has lots of sand in it, it flows water very well, so it's a lot easier for us to understand in the soil where the water's going. The bedrock is a little bit more challenging, because we just have a few drinking water wells in bedrock to use our information. We do not have monitoring wells in bedrock. They're a lot more expensive to put in, they're a much more significant cost to manage. And many times in these situations, because of that additional cost and things, the state will work with us to look at the wells that already exist in bedrock, the drinking water wells, use regional information mapping and where the watershed boundaries are to make that overall a determination as to what's happening in the bedrock groundwater. But it, it, it means that some things can be a little complex locally, because, you know, the wells could be in different fractures, and you can think of those as different water pathways. So if you're measuring a water level in one river and the well goes through two rivers, they're going to have different, they're going to behave differently potentially. But the well is all open, so they average out, if that makes sense. So if you have a open, you know, if you put an open well and through two rivers, all the water's going to flow into that well, but then it averages it out. So that becomes very complex when we're looking at those types of things. So, but in general, water does not flow uphill.
Okay.
In general.
That's, that's, well, it's kind of good, yeah. Going one way, right?
Yeah, it only goes one way.
All right, so there's a, oh, there's an old beehive-shaped well over here across from the store, used to be a town well, right over there, there's a dog up. You know where that was at the testing? It actually shaped literally like Maine Park.
Do you know the address?
Right across from that store, right on the front lawn. You can't miss it, right outside the door. I was curious if that was testing.
One sixty-five?
Uh, I can look, I, I don't know offhand.
I'm just kind of curious, because that was, that was, that was a local.
Yeah.
Location, water.
If we can get an exact, if we can get an exact address, we can check it.
And then I did notice one of your slides say that you're finding it stabilized or actually decreasing in value. That, that's a good thing, right?
Yeah, that's very good, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
All right, and the last question I have to you, the wells that you're going to put in some future testing.
Yep.
Directly across from the fight apartment at Main Set, you were talking south of there, is that correct, your additional wells?
Uh.
The reason why I'm asking, we're getting ready to undergo, we're going to reconstruct the plains.
We are, so there's going to be one, I guess, south of the fire station, and then two north of the fire station on the plains. I think it would be important to coordinate any reconstruction with the well, because what we don't want to do, is what we kind of have to do at the fire station, is put a new well in, because we lost one, because we had one there, and we got data from it, it was good data, but the state came, and this happens from time to time, the state came back and said, you know what, we want a little bit more data from that location that you don't have, so now we're going to pay money to put it back in. So I think once these are in, it would be good to coordinate around any of the other activities. I mean, these are dots on a map, you know, they're not set in stone where they have to be, you know, there, there's variability where we can put them, but the general zone is, I think, what we're trying to capture.
So mainly what's happening is going to be trenching to put, going to redo the electrical on the plains, and there will be some above-ground structures, but a lot of it's going to be putting the stuff underground. And, and Peter's got a.
Directly located across from the fight apartment on that section of plains, not south, not north.
Directly across.
Between the fight apartment and the church.
If, if you have some draft plans that show the areas, you could provide those to us, and we can try to work with that and try to avoid those areas if we can. And then if not, we can have a good discussion and work out, you know, if there's a way we can work around any potential conflicts, if that makes sense.
Well, we talked about this this morning, actually, at the board meeting, and we anticipated you discussing this today, and we, we specifically said that we need to make sure that it's coordinated so that, so that there isn't overlap in the locations.
No, that's great, thank you. All right, thank you.
The fight apartment situation.
Right there, okay.
The church on plains.
And so the dug well would be like, or that, the well point.
Fight apartment side?
No, on the plains side, would be in this area.
Okay.
Is that what that is? Well, there's an existing well on the plains now.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll ask for public comment and questions once I finish with the board, but we will do that. Ellen?
Thank you.
Can you talk to me a little bit more about the requirements for groundwater management zone? Is that something that the town has to adopt, or is it just something that's based on this?
It's not something the town has to, so when, once it's delineated, the, and we submit the application, the, you know, the town will have to go to the registry of deeds and then file that notice, and then it gets attached to all the properties that were within that sort of box. So like, you know, not, this is not the zone, but like, say all these dark blue properties were in the zone, like each one of these would be listed on the permit, and they would all have notices recorded with their deeds that they're in this zone.
And what if we don't?
There's other instruments, and there's only one exception in the state that I'm There's other instruments and there's only one exception in the state that I'm aware of, and the town had to pass a ordinance restricting water use in there and it wasn't very straightforward of a process. And I'm thinking of the Elite Laundry Site in Jeffrey, I don't know if you're familiar with how they got it.
I'm not familiar.
It was, it was a little bit of a unique situation. And like I said, I'm only aware of one where it was not done through the standard process of just putting the notice on the deed.
So, so will the result of your next phase of work essentially be creating this zone?
Proposing it.
Yeah.
Proposing it for review by the state. And then the state will come in and say, yes, we agree or no, we don't. And then that's, and if they approve it, then it goes into the process of actually getting it recorded on deeds and then the property owners, each of their deeds will say that their property sits within the zone.
So, so does the state create the zone based on your study?
That's right, it's a state requirement.
So the town isn't creating the zone?
No, it will be the state that issues the zone.
And it's based on where the groundwater samples are and where we, where we, where the state agrees of our interpretation of what's related to the fire department and what isn't. And that will be the challenging piece. If we feel there's multiple sources out here, they may or may not agree with our interpretation. The state tends to, tends to focus on if they have a responsible party, that's where they tend to focus. Because a lot of times, these lower concentrations, if they don't appear to be related to the original release, there's really nobody else that can manage those and the state has to sort of take that over. So they're reluctant, they want to see lots of good information that demonstrates that that actually occurs before they're willing to, to agree with that type of interpretation, if that makes sense. Because of course, you know, then they become responsible potentially because there's nobody else.
I, I think what I'm trying to ask is, where does it say that the town then has to put restrictions on property owners' deeds?
The, the state, that's a state law or regulation, I should say. Sorry, I'm not an attorney. But it's, it's in the state regulation, so I don't know how it goes back to the statute that the regulation came from. And it's not the town that's saying that the property owner has to have this on the deed, it's the state that's saying it.
So the state will do it or the state requires the town to do it?
Well, the consultant does it on behalf of the town in response to the state's request, if you will.
And how do property owners find out about this?
There is a notification.
They get a letter.
It's like a draft format letter the state provides.
Yeah.
But that comes from the state?
Through us. It would come through us.
Yeah.
Or through you if you choose.
I don't choose.
Yeah.
And so then, yeah, so then the property owners get a letter that say, your property is within an area that groundwater contamination has been identified and so now you're part of this groundwater management zone, you can go to wherever to get the permit, get a copy of the permit to understand what's happening, things that sort. And it's very commonly done in the state, though I do know environmental attorneys that don't agree with the process and feel that it's not the right process. But the state's position is, is that if, if they didn't do this, then if the property is sold, information may get lost and folks may put a well in their property and not know that there's contamination there and things that sort. So I think that's the, largely the rationale behind the whole process and how it came apart. But again, it's a regulation.
An unfunded mandate. This is an unfunded mandate, in other words, it could be.
Yeah, in some ways, I guess you could say, but
A lot of ways.
You know, the, the really, the cost to the GMZ is mostly the cost to record the information at the registry of deeds.
So I have a question relating to a situation that we recently had where recent sampling identified levels exceeding acceptable at a site right across the street from us. And I want to make sure that if you have any guidance on the proper way that notification should be made to them, that, that you explain that to us. But also, at what point will we know the source of the particular contaminant? Because it's my understanding that if the source is identified as from the firefighting foam, the town is responsible. If it's from some other source that's not town-related, then the town is not necessarily responsible. So is there, in any particular sample, is, is, are, are we able to tell by some sort of chemical signature or whatever if it's, if it's, if it originated with the fire station, the source?
So theoretically, yes, but in practice, it's very, very challenging to be able to look at an individual sample and say, yes, this came from here, it didn't come from there. So how we approach that, as I alluded to before, where I said the different circles can change based on how things move in groundwater, different sources, mixing of sources. So the way to address that the best is to look at lots of different types of information. So we call it multiple lines of evidence, right? So we look at lots of different information, we look at chemical signature like we showed you on the map, we look which way is groundwater flowing. We say, are we in the soil water or are we in the bedrock water? We compare those. We look at where there are potential sources, we look at where there's septic. And we take all this information and we try to understand what it's telling us. And many times, we can, we can identify, you know, sources and areas that don't appear to be related to the sources. But not every single well can be determined a hundred percent and it becomes a weight of evidence type approach. So there could be situations, and unfortunately, the situation that we see right now based on the data we have is, things are fairly complicated in the town area of Kingston because we have the history of the AFU during the summer bonfires on the plains, we have the fire department, and then we have a number of different chemical signatures right now that look similar to each other but different from others and there's, you know, there's just a lot of complexity. And so we have some ideas on how we can do some additional analysis with the data that we're going to be collecting as part of the supplemental site investigation to try to help us better understand that. But the challenge is that sometimes if the question's very complex, it requires collecting additional information that is not currently planned. And so then a decision has to be made, you know, what's the benefit to investing in that additional information versus the benefit of what it might tell you? And that's where we'll have to collaborate with you and help you understand what we think the, you know, potential pitfalls are, the likelihood of success, things that sort. Because we don't want you to invest a bunch of money and end up with the same answer you already had, that that's not worth anybody's money or time, right? So we want to make sure that if we're going to do something extra, it really is going to have a benefit that's going to benefit the town, it's going to be worth you spending your money on. So, but that's, that we won't know until we finish the site investigation that we're about to do. But that site investigation is designed to both answer the questions that the New Hampshire DES has provided to the town, but also to try to help understand this multiple sources question and better understand where groundwater's flowing, better give us more information to do some of these chemical analyses and things that sort. And so we will be doing that. And we have other things we can compare to too, like outside sources. People have done studies on areas that are, been impacted by septic and they've demonstrated that it's septic. So we can look at that information, it should look similar if it's septic, right? Because the same consumer products were used everywhere, right? There's really nothing to say that Kingston's going to be different from another town in that regard. So those are the types of things that we look at. But it is, it's a very complicated process, so unfortunately, it's not a silver bullet.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay. Questions from anybody else? Yes, and I'm going to ask you to come up to the table, please.
Thank you, taking my question.
So if, if you just sit yourself down.
Well, such a quick question.
It's going to, it's going to catch your, it's going to, it'll capture your voice better.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
If you could state your name, please.
My name's Kathy McDougall and I live at Nine Rock Bremen Road with my husband Jim, which is across the street basically from the new fire station. And my only question at this point, though I have a lot swirling in my head, is, do we have access to this report or do I need to like re-watch it on the video and?
You mean the presentation that was just made?
The presentation, yes.
Yeah, we can leave that with you, I can say.
We can put it on the website.
On the website, sure. Perfect.
So give, give us a couple, couple of days to make, make that all work and
Right, no hurry, I'm just, I've just been trying to kind of casually follow this issue since we're a point-of-entry treatment system and we've had good water as a, as a result of that, but not so before that, so.
So keep a watch for, and if it, if, if you check in a couple of days and it's not there, you can always contact Susan at the town office and
Reminder, yeah.
And check to see what the status is.
Yeah, because I have a couple of neighbors who will probably want to look at it too. So that's a good place for it. Thank you.
On the website, there's a page dedicated just for this under the select board, so just go there and then under PFAS and there's a lot of information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, yes?
Thanks. I'm Jim McDougall, like Kathy said, Nine Rock Bremen. I just, first I want to raise something for your consideration based on your report and that is, we're one of the six points that gets tested semi-annually. And going forward, you said you would make a proposal that there would be annual testing and sometimes it goes to biannual. So I'd ask you to consider, is there a difference based on the level of contamination? In other words, the first six were contaminated under the original standard. Then the state of New Hampshire lowered it and a number of other homes came in. So is one of the first six being tested every six months, I'm comfortable with that, but being tested every two years, I'm not so sure I'm comfortable with that. So I just ask, based on the level of contamination, is there different procedures that ought to be followed or is it all one lump group? And, and I, you don't have to answer me now, but as you think through this, I, if you told me your water would be tested every two years, I mean, as far as the inflow, I understand, that's a long-term project to reduce the contaminants. But I'm more concerned with the state of the operating system, that the water I'm drinking is being cleaned properly and I don't know after two years if I would have that same confidence that I'm drinking clean water.
Yeah, so I, I think that schedule is one year, right?
Yeah. I think poet systems would be one year and that would be written into the groundwater management permit, so it's memorialized. Because right now, everyone, all these systems have come online at different times and that's, you know, one advantage of the permit is that it sort of brings everything we've done sort of as, you know, separate items into one package, which makes it easier to follow. And generally, poet systems are on an annual and that has to do with also so that the vendor who maintains the system can track the carbon change-out frequency.
Okay, that's right.
I appreciate that. And then I just have a, maybe it's related, but last year, a sign went up as you turn onto Rock Bremen heading west, a blue sign that says groundwater protection area or zone and I have no idea what that means. Am I supposed to be doing something different, not putting fertilizer on my, I mean, I don't know what that means. It's nice, it's like, hey, great, let's protect the groundwater, but I, I, is it just like a, a showpiece or what's the actual reason for that?
There are actually, you know, plans or activities that, the groundwater protection zones that take place to try to eliminate or not eliminate, but lessen the chance for additional new contamination. It's not for what's happened in the past, it's for new. And so, you know, some of those things could be a little bit less road salt used during the winter. I mean, it depends on what the, the protection zone is and who's the folks that are
I just, I mean, as the homeowner, if I was told, don't do these six things, I wouldn't do them, but I don't know, is that for me, is that for summer visitors, is that for the town? I just don't know why the sign went up and what it means in practical terms because those of us who live there.
I've seen it, yeah. It was a private sign, I don't think. I don't believe that was sanctioned by the town.
Okay.
Okay. I think it was somebody's effort to
I don't think that's the only one in town.
No, I agree, I agree.
So someone did that without permission?
Okay, very good. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Rick?
I, I, I'm not, Rick Russman, I'm not so sure that the signs actually were, there's one on Ball Road too and I think that, and I don't know if Rich St. Alad had something to do with that. He was, as you know, he started the organic fertilizer on the plains and he was on the road reduction, salt reduction, one of his big things, so I think he might have had something to do with that, I'm not sure. But ultimately, we're spending a lot of money here and a lot of concern and time and angst for the people. Is it not fair to say that we really need to be identifying a, a, a community well source and thinking about pipes in the ground so that, and, and that way to eliminate this? Because, you know, whether it's in Grapevine Park or down on New Boston Road or what have you, ultimately, is that where we really need to get to?
So that was looked at very early on, looking at the town developing its own supply and also bringing in a water line in, from Exeter maybe?
Yeah.
Is that, is that it? Yeah.
Well, there were, there were, the report that we got when we decided to go with the treatment systems in the individual homes as our solution at this point, the report also identified a couple of other options, one of which was to, in addition to developing our own water source, was to tap into a neighboring town such as Exeter and I believe there was one other one mentioned.
It may have been Strato. I think those are sort of, it is definitely a struggle, the state's aware of it, there's, you know, a lot of these small systems in sort of rural, rural areas where the infrastructure is not there, making it prohibitively expensive to extend some of these lines. Yeah, I mean, consolidating your treatment into one location and sort of the town having control over it is certainly beneficial, but it's a very large capital expense and, and I don't remember the numbers from that report, but
They, they, they were big.
They were big, yeah. And that doesn't surprise me, seeing the other numbers we've seen recently for waterline expansions and, and treatment additions, you know, this is not the only project where we're, we have these same questions on. And it really comes down to, you're going to be monitoring, you know, for a number of years and I'm thinking multiple decades, you know, and what's that cost over that long run versus, you know, a, a large capital expense upfront? And that's something that the town has to come to because there's benefits of also supplying reliable town water.
Right.
You know?
Well, and there are, and there are parts of town that the town has clearly recognized that at some point in time, and we might be past that point in time, but it will be really the right solution to, to do a municipal water system. And we've taken some steps to create a municipal water utility, the, the town can do that, the, the Warren Article structure is there, there was no money associated with it, but at least the identifying that, that logistical structure is there if we needed to use it.
And in addition to, you know, if, in that scenario, the, the individual treatment systems would go away, but the groundwater management zone and the monitoring would still have to stay because the groundwater would still be above the limit and so that would still, that cost would still be there moving forward. So you'd have, you would lose the cost of maintaining the individual 27 treatment systems, but you'd still have the cost of doing the long-term monitoring and dealing with the management zone. So those are all things that have to be factored in to a decision like that, which makes it, you know, a challenging one to make.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Abby?
Yeah, just curious as when did PFAS begin to be introduced into the water and the environment?
Oh, gosh. So it depends on, firefighting foam became, first was, it was first used in firefighting foam in the late 60s as part of a military specification. It was the only thing that would put out the fires on some of the Navy vessels. Everything else just didn't work. And so then, once that started to work pretty well, by the time you get into the 70s and starts to move into other areas, but it was already in consumer products probably at that time. But I think that really the heyday is probably the 80s, 70s, 80s and 90s when it's used the most. But any time in that time period, it could have been introduced into the water. And the other thing to keep in mind with these chemicals is, again, the numbers we're looking at are so small, it doesn't take very much at all to resolve, to result in those water, at those levels. So, you know, the fact that, you know, a typical home or anything may have had some carpet cleaning or may have had Gore-Tex clothing or whatever it might be, that's enough to end up, if your well's close enough to your septic, that's enough to, to be over these limits. end up, if your well's close enough to your septic, that's enough to be over these limits. And then something like A triple F, that's when we see things like a thousand or more nanograms per liter in water. But when we're talking about four to 10 nanograms per liter, that's, unfortunately, it's like anthropogenic background, you know, something that we caused as humans using the consumer products.
Just curious whether garages and hairdressing salons could be contributing?
Potentially.
I think there's a potential, yeah.
But.
Well, the stuff exists in so many products.
So many products.
That we as consumers and commercial operations use all the time. The source could be from anywhere. Any of our individual septic systems could be sources.
That's right. But it'd be very small. You know, the large sources are things like the use of firefighting foam, manufacturing, whether it's of the chemicals themselves, or something that had the chemicals in it. And then fire suppression systems. So if you have, you know, a system that sprays out the foam if a fire starts in a building or on a property, those are the big, some of the bigger types of sources. All the other ones are very small and similar, so yes, they could all be contributing. But again, it's hard to distinguish one of those from the other, they all just look like this big soup, right?
Has Greenwood Pond been tested, the water itself in the pond?
Not that I'm aware of, and there's currently no surface water standard. And so we have not, because they're not a standard to measure to, we have not made recommendations to sample it, because you risk generating data that you can't compare anything to. So, you know, could there be some in there?
Okay. Yes.
Last question is, does it go into the soil and contaminate the soil, too, or is it just sit in running water?
No, it'll stay in the soil as well. But the good news with the data we have here, stable to decreasing means that the, so the way it works is you, the contamination gets into the soil to start, and then it rains, and it leaches or pulls the contamination out down deeper into the groundwater, right? And that happens at a certain rate, and that rate is based on how much of the chemical gets into the soil and the properties in the soil. And so, once you stop adding chemical to that location in the soil, then the rate that it goes into the groundwater goes down over time, because you start to pull more and more of the chemical out of the soil. And so when that happens, then the other thing that happens is that down gradient, downstream away from the source, the chemical is being what we call attenuated. It's either diluting because there's clean water from rain above, or it's attaching itself to a soil particle, so it's no longer in the water, or it's discharging to a stream or a river and flowing further away. And that's called the attenuation rate. And so, the leaching rate from the source goes down, the attenuation rate stays steady. At some point, this rate is lower than this rate, and so then your concentration in your wells go down. And that's what decreasing means. So that's really good news. It means that there hasn't been new source added in the town in a while, any significant amount. And so that means that over time, the attenuation is now catching up, and so you're going to continue to see those concentrations go down in the wells over time. It takes a while, but that'll continue to happen. And so what that does mean is that, once we see that, there isn't like a place we can go and do a cleanup that will then make the situation a lot better, a lot quicker, because we've already passed that point. A lot of the chemicals have already been removed and has moved on in the system. And so now, and that's a big expense typically, and is an important thing to do, but if this is where past that, then that expense is something the town may not need to be concerned with. Now, the state agency may or may not agree with that, depending on the results of our investigation, but that's what, the way we look at it, you know, it's a benefit analysis, right? You have to spend a lot of money, and if it's not going to change what really happens, then it's not a good idea to do.
Okay. Ellen, and then Stacy, but in the agreements that we have with the homeowners where we install the systems, there is a clause that states that if the levels, PFAS levels drop below and are there for whatever period, stay that way for a period of time, the town's responsibility for the maintenance goes away at that point. So it's kind of built in, we've taken that into account.
Yeah.
Assuming that over time, these levels will be dropping. Ellen?
You went over what the requirements are for the town, once the town's notified that the levels are higher than they should be. You have gone over that it's our responsibility to contact them and let them know. Does it end there? I mean, what if they say, no, I don't, I'm not paying attention to the fact that you're telling us that we have to get water and.
So the homeowner?
No, business owner, for example.
Business owners?
Yeah, what if they say, thanks for the information, what's our now, what's our responsibility?
So the obligation, as I understand, the obligation of town is to notify and offer to provide, but it's up to the property owner to accept. And so then, I've seen it dealt with differently in different areas of the state or different situations, but typically what happens there is you inform the state that, hey, we offered bottled water, we offered to put on treatment, and the property owner refused, said I'm not interested. And so what I've seen a lot of times is, let's wait a while and check back in. But we can't force a property owner to do something. And so if they're not interested in taking that from the town, then your obligation's been met, once you've offered it, and if they refuse.
Okay.
And after Stacy, I want to make sure, if you guys, as health officers, have any questions or comments, please, please weigh in.
I have a question, your, the New Hampshire specifications and the EPA are different, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what are we testing our water to?
So currently, the way the state is managing PFAS is to their own standards, right, which are the numbers that were somewhere between, was it 15 and 18, I think?
Yeah, I think 12 was the lowest.
12, 12 and 18.
Right, and the EPA is four.
It's four, that's right.
Which is significantly lower.
It is different, yes, and it is lower. And so what's happening right now is, the EPA's levels have been officially set, right? It's out there. There have been legal challenges to those. The current administration is reviewing those challenges, so they're not, it's not currently active. They want to look it over and say, do we agree with that challenge, or, you know, are we going to support the rule as written? So they're reviewing that. What, the way the rule states it is that, again, the MCLs apply to public drinking water officially, and then the states manage private drinking water. And so typically, what the states will do is they will change their limits to equal whatever the EPA does. But there's an effective timeframe in which that happens. And so a lot of times, the states will wait, because they, a lot of times, these get challenged in court, to make sure that that process works its way through, so they don't have to keep seesawing back and forth limits. Because if they change them to the four, and then, you know, the EPA comes back and says, no, no, based on the challenge from the court, we have to change it, so we're changing it, and they go, oh, we gotta change it again, because there's a lot of work to change AGQS, it's a legislative process up at the state, up at Concord. So I haven't heard directly, but my understanding is, is the state is watching very carefully what the EPA is doing, what's going to happen to the rule, and then there's an effective date for public water supplies to have to meet it within two years, I think it is, of the effective date. So we're already a year into that, almost.
Okay.
So theoretically, within a year, as long as a challenge is not successful, within a year, public water systems will then have to meet that. But they're a little bit different, because they sample four times a year as the average is compared to that limit, not each individual sample. Whereas for private wells, the individual sample is compared to the limit. So, you know, you could have a water system that collects four samples a year, and every spring, they're above the limit, but every summer and winter, they're below, and so then they're below, because on average, and they don't do anything. But with a private well, if you're over once and it continues, then that's it, then you're above.
So that could, in the future, significantly impact some of the wells that are in the area?
Yes. So if the four nanograms per liter MCL, which we call maximum containment limit for EPA, becomes the federal, stays the federal rule, the state of New Hampshire will do a process that changes their standard, called the AGQS, Ambient Groundwater Quality Standard, to meet that. And then, any homes in town that are less than the 12 to 18, but above the four, would then have to be reevaluated for treatment and our other bottled water or other things like that, at that time.
So that could be.
It could be, it could be more.
It could be more.
Could be significant.
Financial, I can say.
Yeah.
And that's where we say the state could come back and reevaluate the GMZ, is if that standard changes.
That's right. Because then that zone would get bigger, too, right?
Yeah, okay. Well, well, I'm trying to be mindful of time, because the board still has other business to do.
Sorry.
No, I appreciate the information, I want to make sure that Kevin and Pedro, if you have any comments or questions?
A quick question, actually, that Glenn brought up about the source of these PFAS, and not just from the fire suppression systems that they use, but businesses, homeowners, cleaning, chemicals, all kinds of different things contribute to this. Gas stations, manufacturing, correct?
That is correct. I, gas stations haven't been something that has been a big concern.
We haven't seen a lot.
Yeah, but, but most other things, car washes, it was in the wax that went on cars at car washes. So the PFAS show up in a lot of things that were used by businesses, by homes.
Agricultural, lawn care.
It was in some sort of herbicides and pesticide, mosquito spraying, for instance. It was in some of that in some places as well. So it's, unfortunately, there's a lot of places it come from, which was why trying to say, you know, the PFAS. Right? But there are things that can be done, and you can look at it, and we do have known sources here, so we can at least say, this looks like the fire station and this doesn't, right? And so it's coming from something else, not the fire station, which is the town's responsibility, is the fire station, not the other thing, so.
Yeah, that, I can see where that could be kind of interesting, to say the least, where the town's responsibility and for whom, or how big of an area versus these other test sites that are showing, you know, concern because they're higher than New Hampshire's limits, but totally, they could be a mile and a half away from.
That's right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, where does the town?
And that's, that's part of what we're trying to understand, is what's related to the fire station and what might be related to something else? Because we don't, you know, the town needs to focus on its responsibility.
So are these yellow circles I'm seeing up here, are these new proposed?
Locations.
Locations?
Yeah.
And are those being proposed because the concentration has been increasing?
It's to better understand where the, to draw that line on the map that says, where is the PFAS, and which, and which of those locations are, look like they're related to the use of firefighting foam, either at the fire station or on the Kingston Plains at the old bonfires? That's the ultimate purpose of those locations, to understand where the PFAS is, to be able to draw a map around it, you know, this groundwater management zone boundary, and then also try to figure out, are these related to A triple F, or are they not?
Are those groundwater or bedrock wells?
They're all soil groundwater, no bedrock.
They're no bedrock wells.
No.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to.
So, in those locations, according to your latest test results, have they increased from previous ones?
You mean the levels?
Yes.
They've either stayed the same or gone down.
Yeah, based on, so you have to look at data over time, right? And so not every location do we have that kind of information, but the ones we do show stable or decreasing over time. So we're not really anticipating finding higher concentrations out there. If we do, that might mean there's a different source.
Right.
Right?
Are those that sampling these new areas in contrast to sampling in the actual affected area, impact the ability to determine that, for lack of better words, DNA of the actual PFAS, that was the initial focus with regards to what was created due to the fire department bonfires?
So the state requires sampling a number of different PFAS compounds, like 20?
I think it's 23 or 26 now.
23 or 26? So if you remember, if you want to go back to the figure real quick, where we had the, you see all the different colors in the circles? Those are the different compounds, and how much each one is in the sample? So you can use that type of information, this is one way to do that, where you can now see visually, oh, this one looks like the fire station, this one doesn't. And that, then we can, that clues us in to say, okay, let's look at where groundwater flows, what's the history of use here, what's going on in the area, is it a home, is it a business, that type of stuff? So we can start to add all the information together to say, yes, we think this is related to the fire station, or no, we don't think it is.
And the other objective of those new wells is to get a bigger picture of the overall groundwater flow, because right now, we have a very small network. And, you know, with, the challenge with using private drinking water wells is you don't always have very accurate construction information in terms of like where that screen interval is in that, in the groundwater. With these, we'll have all the information, so we can compare apples to apples, make a bigger groundwater flow map.
Yeah, particularly some, to the east of Kingston Plains, those are more focused on groundwater flow information than chemistry information. And that's the other important piece, is knowing which way the groundwater flows.
Okay, Pedro? All right. Board's all set for now? Okay. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much for coming and providing that information to us. If you could provide the presentation to Susan, she'll get it up on the website for folks to look at it there. And the, the work that you're doing, you're anticipating to be done when, this next step?
The bid should close in April.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so the, so the next kind of steps is, we're working on an annual report with the current data we have. Over the summer, we'll collect this additional data for the supplemental site investigation, and then we'll put it in a report, and it's, we've committed to August to turn it to, to turn it into DES.
Okay.
So that's sort of the timeframe.
Okay.
So we should have more direction at that point.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we will adjourn at the meeting of the Kingston Board of Health at 11:48. And thank you, gentlemen, once again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it very much. We'll reconvene, the Select Board, for just the last few items we have to do here. We've covered most of this, we've talked about the wage study, Paul is going to look at that, and then Council's going to look at it. We have the Collection Center operating plan, which is in your packets, and if the board is okay with it, we need a vote to authorize the signing of it, and I believe.
Collection Center?
Okay.
That one, too?
Yep. So... So we need to reword for Highway versus DPW. Who's going to go back through that? Lori, are you, or Susan?
I'll, I'll let Lisa know.
Or Lisa?
She just needs to replace, this is hers.
Oh, okay, okay.
That she just needs to replace DPW with Highway Department.
Lori, do you need this plan because of the lease with the state of New Hampshire? Is that why we need it?
It has to do with the permit.
Yes.
With our existing permit.
Okay.
And, and just, this is just, it doesn't require Select Board signature. Lisa was just forwarding it as a courtesy that we had to do this, so it doesn't require signature, but it's a requirement of the permit. So, once our new permit is approved, this will have to be changed, because it will change what we're collecting, right? Because the new permit is changing what we're collecting. So this will then just have to be modified once the permit is updated.
This is a permit to run the Collection Center?
Yes.
Okay.
She put it there, it's not a requirement.
But I think we should approve it or not, as the case may be.
Yes, and that's why, and that's why she presented it, right, as a courtesy, but it's not a requirement to have it on the Collection Center operating plan.
And the, what they're waiting for with the new lease, that's going to, that's going
that's going to make you go forward with the new permit?
Right, once the lease is, once the lease is approved, then the dam bureau, I always want to make sure I enunciate that, so it doesn't sound like a curse, will then have to do a letter stating that they approve of the use, and then will submit that with the new permit, with the amended permit. So, it's the lease, the letter from the dam bureau, and then the updated permit. But this is, should have been done previously.
You could also call it the Bureau of Dams.
Yeah, right?
There you go.
That's not as fun.
Or, or the bureau, or the bureau that holds water back.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll get what Lisa said to...
Thank you. Is there any new business that we haven't already covered? Public comment number two. Thank you. Board business, I don't have anything listed on here, but we do have correspondence, we have a few things in the orange folder.
That is going to wait, I did talk to Abby, she wants to discuss that at their meeting.
Thank you. The next one is an appointment to public office for Joseph, I don't know if he pronounces it Gagnon or Gagnon, but, Gagnon, thank you.
That's for the budget committee.
Oh, it should, it should have been, you should have signed one for us, or for the, for Tammy. Okay, never mind.
I just like, don't ever sign that at all.
Did you already get that to her?
We have an application for facilities use for Sandborne Baseball and Softball Association. It has been signed off by police, fire, I don't know if road agent, yes, road agents here, so all three of those entities. This is for Como Field, April through June, between the hours of five and eight, weekdays, Saturdays, for baseball and softball games and practices. Eight AM to 3 PM is tentative, it says. Schedule will vary by week. Department heads have signed off, it says.
Yeah, they get them individually sometimes, we have some pages.
I'm assuming this is something that we have been doing?
Yes.
It is.
Okay, but...
Assuming that, of course, we get to use the main gym at the building.
I need to make a motion that we put this off until we have a second.
You know what, no, I'm going to vote against that motion. Well, I'll second it for discussion purposes, but I don't want to get in, I don't want to get into, you know...
I don't want to mess up the games in the practice, but that's okay. I just put it off, I'll give it a second.
Okay. I will, I'll withdraw my second and say, "Never mind."
All right, so we're back to...
Sign it.
What do we want to do with this?
Sign it.
Is there, is there a motion to that effect?
Give us Tammy some, please.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Ellie. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, there is a certificate of insurance, by the way, attached, it does have valid dates on it, and it's a million, five million limit policy, so I don't know where we signed it.
It's, it's right on the front there, on the bottom, I believe. It's very small on here, oops, under here.
Oh, it's the one that's highlighted.
Oh, that's easy.
Jesus. Pass it around, please. The collection center, we dealt with that for now.
That one is for people that want to use the room for knitting, I only got...
This room.
And the only problem is, I asked Tom if the stairs would be reasonably sure to be done by that date.
April 12th is the date, by the way.
Because you, you were not allowing any extra activities in here pending the stairs for a while, so that was the question that Graham had too, for safe access, getting out if need be. So, I'm not sure what you want to do with that.
Do they normally go to the...
They go to the library, and they came to us because they couldn't use the library.
What about the rec center? Was that the event?
That would be more appropriate.
Right?
I'm going to talk to her about that.
Yeah, unless, of course, pickleball, but...
That's outside, though.
Oh, they do it inside.
Oh, they're doing it inside?
Oh, they have been, that's where they, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, they move everything out of the way. But I think that would be a better alternative.
Yeah, I'll talk to Abby.
Yeah.
It's a Saturday.
April 12th.
Yeah, we can't have them trooping through.
We don't, we don't know for sure if it's going to be ready. I mean, the stairs are actually in now, the railings are not, however, and the pavement is not done in the front, so...
I would still say, no, that's two weeks away, I'd be surprised.
Okay, so, no, but I'll talk to her about rec center.
Okay. And the last thing in the orange folder is a letter that Susan has crafted for Brenda Blake at 51 North Road, and this is in response to the fencing that was damaged over the winter, that was determined to be in the town's right of way, and this letter is explaining that, would you like me to read it?
You don't have to read it.
Okay. It's, it's basically explaining that the fence is in the town's right of way, therefore, we're not going to be responsible for taking care of it, but at the same time, we're not going to require that the property owner move it, take it down, so...
Okay.
If the board's okay, I will go ahead and sign the letter.
Yep.
And thank you, Susan, for the...
Yeah, Lisa helped with it.
Carefully crafted words. It's, it's very nicely done, as usual.
Mm-hmm.
And minutes from March 24.
So moved, public and non-public?
I had a couple of changes that I gave to Susan, one of them was, the Kingston Days had approved $2,000 for supplies, she had put $1,000 in the minutes, and then the tax mailer, DPW, was requesting for MS4, not solid waste, so I already gave her those corrections.
Okay.
Anything else?
Other changes or adjustments? Ellen, did you have anything? Peter?
Just a quick little follow-up, just to make a note for the record.
Are we, are we...
In the minutes?
We're going to finish up with the minutes.
Sorry, no, I'm sorry.
Finish up with the minutes. So, a motion, let's do them separately, because one of them just got amended. So, a motion for the public minutes as amended.
Second.
Lori, Ellie, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions unanimous. Motion for the non-public minutes of March 24.
So moved in perpetuity?
Oh, no, we already did that part.
Oh, we did.
We already sealed them.
Oh, all right, okay.
We did that after the...
Gotcha, that's right.
We're just...
That's right.
Well, that's right. Motion by Ellie, signed by Lori, and that's as written, I assume?
Correct.
Yep.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, that's unanimous. Peter?
Just, I think it should be important to note it to the record, first of all, that sign was placed approximately two years ago, and it was placed by the Highway Department, and I think it was under the direction of conservation.
That groundwater?
Yes.
Okay.
Not only that location, but I believe a couple of other locations.
Which more than one?
So, under the direction of conservation.
That's what I think it came from, but the Highway Department did install the signs. Just, just to lay on that.
Okay.
And the second thing, I just want to make, I've done a little research, because I, you noticed by some of the questions I asked about the PFAS and possible other locations of contamination. Historically, the bonfire was never in history put out of form, really factual information. So, we may want to just kind of address that, because they keep talking about that bonfire.
Well, we should...
Even when there was the cars on top?
We had them, never put out by law.
How did they just let it go?
The fall originally came to Kingston...
They just burned down.
The, the air force base. And it came in little containers, where they had a fire, they could dump it in the back of the tanker, and it would mix, and then they blow it all the most. That's how it originally came to Kingston, right?
We should let them know that, because they, there's...
They keep stating that.
Well, that's because they were told that by someone along the way.
Correct. And that could have, that could have came from, well, they used to have the bonfire, they probably put it out, but they only had that foam as an emergency situation in five gallon buckets that sat in the fire department. God forbid if they had a plane crash, that's why it came from P's. They could dump it in the tanker, put the fire in.
Because we did have a plane crash by where the, by where the police station currently is located, we had a plane crash.
And we had a front one across from the Shell Station, 125.
On 125, that's correct.
So, there's two plane crashes, so that, that's how foam came to Kingston from planes from P's air force base. It wasn't a put-out-of-the-bonfire, it never was a put-out-of-the-bonfire. But I think that's important, because I think, again, we're pointing all these fingers in all these directions, but one finger's pointing, that's funny.
Right, right, right.
And that's really what it comes down to, that should be addressed.
Well, that's important for them to know, because all through this process, there's been some thought that there might have been foam used, and so they've been going under that assumption.
Correct.
Would you pass that along to them?
I will.
Please?
I have, I have heard other stories over the years, so we need to, you know, not just putting out the fire, but for training or whatever, yeah.
Because they, if, if that really is the case, Peter, then they don't have to spend a lot of time, and we have another...
I worked at Carnival for years, Bill Bartlett and running the Big Six Twenty Wheel, and it was, it just burned out, is what it did. And if anything, they would spray sometimes the trees of people's houses, cinders getting on, if the wind was blowing...
Okay, so you're supporting what Peter said?
Yes, I agree with what Peter said.